The April 3rd, 2025 Des Moines City Council Committee of the Whole is now called to order. The Committee of the Whole is the council's opportunity to hear briefings from staff on a variety of items and emerging issues. It's a time for council education and an opportunity to offer input and direction to staff. Though the public is invited to attend, it's not a time for public interaction. No formal council action will be expected. So please note that all council members are in attendance and council member Nutting will be attending remotely. The first item that we have up is Surface Water Management Utility Tree Preservation Program, and I believe Tyler Beakley is going to be giving us our presentation.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Technology started here.
My minor point, or pardon me, but did you say July the 10th? Or just people started the video and then they?
Oh, I said April 3rd, didn't I?
I'm sorry, just people, they start watching?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I need to change my template and make sure I proofread well. Thank you, council member. Go ahead, Tyler.
Yeah, so Tyler Beakley, Surface Water Utility Manager. Today, we're talking about trees and the surface water utility and how those mix. So to dive in. There we go. The purpose of today's presentation is to, one, outline Department of Ecology requirements and their relation to our surface water utility and trees. Share the progress as the surface water utility explores those new requirements. And then a preview of potential recommendations and financial considerations for what we're So a bit of background into these requirements. So the city does have a NPDS permit, National Pluton Discharge Elimination System permit. Essentially, it's a water quality permit for the city for discharging into the sound. We need to make sure our surface water gets there clean and safe. So in 2024, the city of Des Moines received its new iteration of this permit from Department of Ecology, which included three new requirements for tree canopy. The first one was to map all tree canopy within public properties in Des Moines. The next two are related to policy and codes. So before the end of 2028, the city would need to adopt and implement tree canopy goals and/or policies. And I'll get into now how we're looking at those. So to kick it off, last June, our staff began working with our engineering consultant, Parametrics, to start looking at these requirements. The first one we looked at was creating this map, online GIS map of tree canopy in the city. So you can see an outline here of sort of what was delivered to the city, mapping those trees down to the single tree to obviously larger forests. The next is we want a detailed what trees are beneficial to stormwater for water quality and flow control regarding infiltration, water absorption properties. And through just research and the greater regional community, our consultant helped inform us that, you know, tree clusters in forests are really what identify as beneficial to surface water. So how they define tree clusters are pockets of trees that are over 10,000 square feet, so groups of trees. And then forests are anything over three-fourths of an acre would be defined as a forest. So keep that in mind as we go through the presentation. The next bullet point, I worded very poorly, I realize, and to help you understand that. So 29% of the canopy, or sorry, 29% of the city is forested canopy, whether private or public. Now, 16% of that canopy falls under city-owned property, which only makes up 5% of the city. So if we do the math there, over 50% of the canopy throughout the whole city is on city-owned property, which only makes up a small portion. So there's a good opportunity there, looking at the potential of what trees remain in the city and where they lie, public versus private. So moving on to looking at potential goals and policies, those other two requirements required by the Department of Ecology. Parametrics began helping us with this endeavor of evaluating, you know, what is potentially to do with trees? What could we look at preserving private trees, preserving public trees, planting trees on riparian corridors, next to streams, next to the sound? We evaluated all of this. They looked at existing city codes, they looked at existing city policies, they looked at regional, what other cities are doing around the region. And then they also met with two different workshops with city staff, from planning to transportation, to surface water, to our GIS team, hosting roundtables to discuss, you know, which policy makes sense to tackle for this ecology requirement. So where we landed was protecting existing trees on public land. Not to say low-hanging fruit, but it's low-hanging fruit, where we own these parcels and these are existing trees that we can honestly come in and protect through either acquiring those parcels or putting conservation easements over the forested areas on these parcels. Now, just as an FYI, it's city, various city departments own parcels at the city. So the Surface Water Utility already owns some parcels. Parks owns a lot of parcels. PD owns some parcels. There's a good mix of ownership throughout the city. Marina is another one. So, you know, the first, or the second bullet point here is it aligns with the larger goal of meeting the ecology requirements. It meets water quality and permit requirements. And also, talking with our consultant, it doesn't preclude us from pursuing these other goals of, that we had explored of private trees being preserved or planting new trees on public property. It's just we wanted to focus in on one that would truly be submitted to ecology. So it lays the groundwork of to explore those other options in the future. So now we get into the evaluation of, you know, is this feasible to take on the ownership through the Surface Water Utility? We're just starting this phase with our consultant. We wanted to know what city-owned parcels have, these tree clusters and forests defined on them. We want to try to understand the feasibility of transferring those to the Surface Water Utility. That could be, what are their current use? What department is currently owned them? Why do they own them? Are there any utilities or easements on these parcels that would preclude us from taking them over? Those are things we're starting to look at. And then also, what are the legal and financial implications of? One example is Des Moines Creek Trail. Can that be transferred to the Surface Water Utility if there's a public trail in it? Or does that need to discuss with legal on easements for public use? That's something yet to be discussed, but those are on our mind of scenarios we're going to be looking at. So just after I made this presentation, I got some numbers, preliminary numbers that came in. So we're looking at 61 parcels of canopy to protect and be transferred in some way or another to the utility. Actually, 57 of those 61 would be acquire and full, meaning they're completely forested. There doesn't seem any reason why we couldn't take them on completely. And then four of them would be partial acquisition, like I'm thinking Des Moines Beach Park, where we have forested hills on each side of the ravine, where we could protect those trees via conservation easement. So of those 61 parcels, that represents a total of 130 feet total acres. And within those acres, 110 of those are canopy. So we're talking about preserving over 110 acres of tree canopy. And again, these are preliminary, what we're going to be looking at for feasibility, but yeah, just initial numbers this week. And then, so again, some more reasons why it makes sense to transfer these to the Surface Water Utility. It offers long-term protection for these tree canopies. They'd be, whether or not it's under easement or not, these would be placed under conservation easements, meaning these trees are protected and need to be maintained, and this canopy needs to be maintained in perpetuity. Also, it ensures a reliable and predictable funding source for maintenance of these trees areas through the Surface Water Utility. It centralizes the responsibility to the Surface Water Utility, where right now, like I said, there's various departments that own these canopy parcels that, you know, if there's hazard trees, we're pulling from this budget or this budget. This centralizes it into one maintenance crew, one staff, one program that are looking at these canopied areas. And then also, it would free up some general fund for those owned by parks or other departments that pull from the general fund, those property taxes, maintenance costs for hazard tree removal, homeless encampments, like the one we just had on Parkside cleaned up. Those costs would then be transferred to the Surface Water Utility from the general So financial considerations, what we're also looking is, you know, what is the impact to the Surface Water Utility if we take on these additional costs? Right now, it's kind of aligned. We're in a study with another consultant, FCS Group, to look at our projected years and our projected rates for the Surface Water Utility, as well as how we're doing healthy, how healthy is our budget, to see if we can incorporate this new demand of cost into our budget, or if maybe a one-time rate adjustment would be needed to support new staff to help maintain these canopy areas and the associated maintenance costs. Yeah, next slide. Thank you for your help. I'm going to have to put this remote. Okay, so what's next? Kind of a timeline events here. So our hope is to finish the feasibility of that parcel list of six or three parcels. We're going to evaluate each one and try to maybe narrow that down into what's feasible. We're hoping to finalize that list this fall. We're hoping to develop a tree preservation program by the end of year. That would include like an operations and maintenance plan, how often we get out there and inspect these canopy areas, how often we look for noxious weeds, hazard trees, how often we get an arborist onboard to evaluate these areas. It would also outline a funding structure and a staffing structure. And then in 2026, we could begin working on transferring those parcels. Followed by 2027, if a rate increase is applicable, taking on that rate increase and then launching the actual O&amp;M of these forested parcels. Next slide. Yeah, questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Oxiger and then Councilmember Grace Motzwi.
Yes, thank you. Interesting presentation. Are we looking at all with regard to these areas of improving the plantings of the trees?
Yeah.
Okay, because basically in some of these areas, we have what are known as trash trees, that when the old growth was cut, that, you know, the trash trees grow. And, but the conifers are more desirable for their carbon capture type thing. So are we looking at a program of going in and evaluating the parcels and maximizing the desirable attributes?
Yeah, I would say that's more or less a second phase of the program. The first phase is preservation. So coming in and securing these parcels and making sure they're not cut for any other use. The next phase of that is that O&amp;M piece, where we come in and evaluate these areas and what's best for them in a natural form. So it could, yes, we could highlight areas of planting.
So councilmember, we implemented, we were Phase 1 city where I came from, and we're a Phase 2 city here. So we, I've been through this once before. And the first part is for the Surface Water Utility gained control of the locations and then figured out a funding stream to do exactly that, to manage these actual forests. And so as we're doing the analysis of the rates this year, we'll be taking a look at that. But once there's, right now, the problem is, is, you know, like, our public works crews will go out, if there's a tree, we might have to remove a dead tree, a cottonwood or something, as a $15,000 unexpected expense. And so there's not a budget and they aren't actively maintained. It's a responsive maintenance to the trees you're talking about. And it's not a proactive maintenance of our, a long-term proactive maintenance of a really valuable asset. In Tacoma, we took over 658 acres, and that was the beginning. And then we started doing things mostly on all the steep slopes like we have here in the ravines around Schuster Parkway in Tacoma. And then we maintain those and we bring them up to a much better standard so that they're a perpetual forest that's doing exactly what you're talking about. But this is the starting point, is the stormwater permit identifies that this is a benefit to stormwater regionally, and then you consolidate those parcels, and then you start actively managing them, and you just stormwater rate system as a stormwater function for water quality to help manage cost, those costs and do that, whether it's an arborist or cutting trees out or removing ivy or any of those things.
And then also, as far as protecting these areas, there are some areas where we do have trees that adjoining property owners decide that they're blocking their view, and they come in. And Seattle had some rather notorious incidents of this. Do you have any idea how we would?
So that's also a later phase. If you've ever been down the Rustin Way, you've seen just mass cuttings of trees, right? And for years, people pretty much ignored that until our program started coming up, we started getting conifers back in, instead of just cutting, you know, the maple, you know, vine maples and stuff like that. When real trees started coming up, they started cutting those. And then, you know, as the system became more mature, then we passed code so that we could, we could then enforce, you know, they're destroying a city asset. A tree is considered a city asset, it's like cutting down a lamppost. Right? And so, and that's how we treat it in Tacoma now, and that's how Seattle treats it. So eventually, there will be codes involved with protecting our assets, which in this case would be the trees.
Do you have any kind of timeline to when that?
We haven't identified that yet. We're in a very early, this is, this is really just a kickoff for the council to see. But the program over the next, you know, biennium, two bienniums will mature, and those are all things that will come out of that program.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I'll just add real quickly that, you know, we do have an existing tree policy with, through our planning department, and we would, of course, these trees would fall under existing rules regarding cutting and enforcement.
Councilmember Grace Motzwi.
Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to capture how you rephrased that bullet under Phase 1 to make sure I understood it correctly. So in the GIS-based tree survey, we found that 29% of the, of citywide is canopy.
Correct.
And the city makes up 5% of the land in the city, the city-owned property. And on that 5% is 16 of the total canopy.
Correct.
So just on that little 5%, the city is responsible for 16% of the total canopy of the whole city.
Correct.
Right? So we are actually already stewards of a ton of the canopy that's out there right now. And we're talking about the importance of preserving it, enriching it through this process, and how much we value it as an asset, not only for stormwater management, healthy riparian areas, but also the carbon offset that councilmember Oxiger mentioned.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct interpretation.
Absolutely.
Great, I wanted to make sure.
Had a mouthful.
It is. I wanted to make sure I captured that correctly. And when you did the tree canopy, you were looking at both private and public, so that 29% is both, right?
Correct.
Okay, excellent, cool. There are many other public entities here in Des Moines, and do you know how much is on school district property or high-line college property or other utilities?
We don't, but that can be easily gained now that we have this baseline map and just overlay property ownership and can pull that data out.
Gotcha, okay. That may be interesting because I think that they probably have their own stewardship programs, but that might be something to look at to see if they are aligned or in sync in some way. Okay, and then the next thing I had for you was, you had 61 parcels, and you said, just to make sure I heard this correctly, those 61 parcels are owned by various other parts of the city already, so those are not any new parcels for acquisition.
Correct. Those are existing city-owned parcels.
In a later phase, would you be looking at another set of parcels that would increase the amount of acreage? Like, there's got to be adjacent properties that would add to this as well?
That, we have not addressed that at this early stage, but that is absolutely, others, other programs around the state have done that. And that, you know, eventually that, so, and it really comes down to is, does the utility require additional for stormwater points and all those other things? And if so, the utility can acquire additional parcels, and utilities have been doing that to increase their stormwater points.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Mahoney and the Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't know whether it's Phase 1 or Phase 2, you will be identifying the invasive species like ivy, blackberries and stuff like that. And obviously, of days of old, from what I've read, there was a lot of Western red cedars and stuff like that, huckleberries, the ferns, I think the Oregon grape and some of those things. Would we kind of be having, getting a plan on maybe replanning with those indigenous?
Yeah, we'd likely work with our consultant and an arborist to detail a plan for how to maintain these into the future, and whether or not that includes planting such as those.
Okay, and that's a great segue, because it's about arborists, foresters, somebody along those lines, to manage the forest. You guys are going to evaluate whether we would use a service or maybe bring in-house as an FTE based on?
Potentially, yeah.
With the work and everything. We'd hear about that in the fall? Is that kind of the anticipation or would it come later?
That's the loose timeline right now, yeah, by end of year.
And are we looking at the opportunity for volunteers? I know that we have some tree stewards around the community that would probably be a great asset in invasive species removal or replanning or something like that. So is, obviously want to find a way to get some of the community involved that that's important to.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's right in line with thinking as we develop this O&amp;M manual, is like, here's how can we interact with stewardship in the community and get them involved.
And Councilmember Mahoney, having been through that process before, we also have to be very careful when we do that, because we have a lot of steep slopes, a lot of, you know, a lot, a lot of this stuff involves sharp tools and injuries, and there's liability. So what we used to do is we would use volunteers in areas that were flat and safer along trail edges and say, hey, go five feet in from the trail. And then, you know, if it gets up there onto the, you know how our, it's all, a lot of this is very steep critical area slope, and you need professionals or people that are trained better, not just volunteers. So the answer is there is a place for the citizenry to volunteer for this, but it also has to be very controlled and very managed.
No, absolutely, and taking in their safety into consideration is something I would expect you would do. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
One thing just kind of caught my ear, and I don't see it in the PowerPoint, but I think you said there was 131 acres that the city owned that are canopy, and there's another amount that are not canopy. Is that correct?
So of the parcels we highlighted that would be a great opportunity to transfer, so it's not all city parcels.
Okay.
But the city parcels that are heavily forested, we highlighted 61. Of, in that 61 parcels, those, the total land area is 133 acres. 110 acres of that 133 is forested.
And what happens with that other?
That would be the example of like the beach park, where there's lawn or buildings and it's, a portion of it is reserved and managed by the swim utility.
And that's where the easement, conservation easement?
Yeah, that would be a good application for an easement.
The sides.
Yeah, where the Surface Water Utility wouldn't own the beach park per se.
Okay.
But we would manage a section of it.
But that's not necessarily space that has the trash trees that Councilmember Oxiger was talking about. Is that correct? Or is, are those overlapping things?
I think it's, there's, there's about 20, it turns out to be like 23, 20 acres that are probably other use areas. So they may not be treated in the future. Some of, some of that, some component of that might be able to be treated in the future. Some of it might be removed and replaced with better trees. But I have a feeling a lot of it's like the lawn at the beach park. There's places like that that are open, more active open space than passive.
But we haven't really peeled?
We haven't peeled that up yet, no. Our goal, the goal of the utility is to figure out as much of the city parcels that makes sense to be part of a stormwater program, and then find a way to actively manage those for the best, best ways and best forest practices, and to also be able to, through the Stormwater Utility, for the benefit of the ratepayers, to be able to fund those improvements and manage it correctly. So it's not only just a program to fix the trees, it's also a way to find the financing source to be able to do it actively and to treat the trees as truly as an asset and maintain them correctly.
As you mentioned, we have a tree code. I remember one of the aspects of that is a three-to-one replacement ratio that applies to both public and private lands, I believe, correct?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, Deputy Mayor.
I think it would just apply to those projects that are under permits. So if, it wouldn't apply, it'd only apply if, whether public or private, it was part of a permit. For tree replacement.
So somebody were developing the area?
Correct.
And therefore needed a permit, that's when?
The tree replacement would be triggered, whether public or private.
If we, if we remove per se a hazardous tree like we've done in, like a cottonwood that's going to fall on someone's house, we normally wouldn't replace that with three-to-one as a maintenance issue currently.
Okay. And is there, I mean, it's been suggested a number of times that we should increase that to at least four-to-one. That would match, I think, what the port has in place at the moment. Any idea where that is on the timeline?
Well, Deputy Mayor, I would say that what we need to do, as we go through this process, the city needs to determine what its canopy ask is, what is the end state of the canopy? Because this crosses multiple different phases of code and of utility, and like was mentioned, our partners, the school district and everything. So, you know, what is the canopy Des Moines wishes to have in the end state? You know, we're at 29 now, that's a very nice canopy. Do we want a, do we want a canopy goal of 35%? Do we want a canopy goal of 30? In Tacoma, it was 30 and we were at 19, right? And so that's, that's a decision and a discussion after we get some of this, we'll be back in the future with you and say, hey, what do you want that canopy to be? That'll also, where that, what that canopy is will determine how aggressive we are in trying to get additionals, or what, what future code replacements of code with four-to-one in the future is, do we increase street trees? You know, what are those requirements? I mean, it's, there's, there's a lot, it's a, it's basically a policy decision for the council, because there's a lot of, a lot of communities that want as many trees as possible. I mean, it's gone as far as I've heard testimony in other jurisdictions that, you know, they want to make it illegal for you, you need a permit to cut a tree on your own property, you know, or, and so there's, there's a lot of stuff that is going to go over time as policy with forestry and trees. This is really Des Moines' very first entry into active management of that asset.
And if you can, and this is if, in setting that overall goal, 30%, 35%, wherever, what are the policy considerations to take into account? And I, and I asking that not necessarily to begin that discussion, but to get it kind of in our minds, so we're starting to consider in the minds of the public who might be watching. What are the pieces that matter in that discussion and we can start having those kinds of conversations?
Deputy Mayor, I think that we definitely have to have discussions with, and this is why this is only on current city parcels. Deputy Mayor, I think that we definitely have to have discussions with, and this is why this is only on current city parcels. Whatever we do those policies, um, a lot of that is driven by permits and by the land use department, right? And so what, what are the goals of the city and how do our, our future land use policies? And that's really not a utility function. So we're kind of like what Tyler was saying, we're grabbing the low-hanging fruit. This is ours, we're going to perform and we're going to manage it correctly, and we're going to set the example for everybody else. But those future policy discussions about how many trees, are we going to have a street tree every twenty-five feet or every fifty feet or every hundred feet in front of a business? I, I don't know the answers to any of those questions, but those are all the types of things that are going to happen, or replacement trees. If someone comes in and knocks down an acre of trees, do they have to replace trees? Or do they have to buy into it in lieu of fees so that we can maintain the trees we have? There's all kinds of different methodologies out there in different jurisdictions. And this is, this is really just the first dip in the water.
I think I would like to add to that, that, um, the council's work that will be coming up in the next few months regarding both the development impact analysis, which you all remember is underway right now. Which is that model that allows us to look at potential future land uses and look at the cost of service and the tax revenue. You know, how trees help and hinder future development and redevelopment needs to be part of that conversation. So when you ask big picture, what are the larger policy implications? I'd say it'd be important for us to sort of understand the council's goals, but also understand the good and bad impacts. That can come from that when it comes to financial sustainability and tax base and development would be, I think, the, the nexus there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, um, so this GIS thing, it's a fresh scan. It's not like the same thing that the Port, Fort Terry did this thing in twenty-seventeen.
Yeah, this was, this was done independently.
And is it literally like one GIS point per tree?
I believe so.
That's fascinating.
I, I, it's LiDAR-based, but also some other technology.
The reason, the thing that, the image that snapped into my mind is hiring an IT manager. Okay, because each tree is basically a computer. And you're talking about control and transfer. And I think about like, oh, they've got twenty-two computers at the police station that you're going to manage, except that it's a biological device.
Right.
And, and that's why, Councilmember, we brought up the arborist. What we found, what we found is as we may have these assets, just like any other asset, you need someone that can manage that asset and has that specialty. And so eventually, I think that we would be back at some time in the future for staff ask.
Yeah, no, I, I don't mean it like sci-fi, that, I probably went off in, uh, the point is, I was thinking in terms of accounting. In other words, you talked about it as if like each department owns their own trees. And I'm like, I had never thought of it that way before.
Fundamentally, the property belongs to a fund which, uh, which is managed by, the, the, the parcels all belong to the city en masse. But the people that manage the individual parcels are the fund that purchased the parcel. So what this will do is consolidate that under one fund so that we can manage them all correctly.
Yeah, so the reason I mentioned the IT thing is, and I'm, I'm hoping you see where I'm going with this. Is that basically, it's like, you know, I'm having a problem with my tree computer, Tyler. You know, let's do an inter-fund transfer. It'll, it'll be part of the cost accounting for each department now.
Right, but instead of doing that, but having multiple departments, I think part of this plan that we're presenting to you today, councilmembers, is that all the parcels would roll into this, into SWIM. And then SWIM would not have to go to the other departments. And you wouldn't have all of that transfer back and forth, because everything would happen with SWIM. So, and, and that brings up something about the transfer that maybe I could mention really quickly. It's is that what we've done, um, and, and, you know, the city attorney has to see if, if, if they're comfortable with, and you, and the policy makes you to see if they're comfortable with this here. Is that when we did these transfers in Tacoma from all the other departments into the, into the stormwater utility. What we did was we offset the cost of those funds into the stormwater utility for, so that they were transferred at no cost. And the benefit to the other funds was that we would take on all future maintenance. Um, and so that, so they were offsetting. And so no, no, no dollars changed hands between funds, we got control of the property and they did that. So that's something that's, that we're, we're looking at to bring forward in the future. And that's how, offsetting the cost of the parcel by future maintenance costs by assuming those, that liability instead.
Yeah, no, I guess my, my thing is essentially, I, it's just, I'm, I'm beating on the same course over and over again. Is that the council tends to focus on the general fund. You were talking about taking on, you mentioned, you know, homelessness cleanup and so on. You're talking about an expansion of like a lot of tasks. And basically, for me, I'm like, okay, that sounds groovy. But then I don't want to see a one-page enterprise fund summary in the budget book. I want to see it broken out with the same level of detail and five-year forecast, which we haven't had. But which I feel would be necessary because you're, you're getting into just a real, which I'm totally down with. I'm just saying it's a real increase in tasks. And, um, and just for transparency, the, the council, the public will want to see, okay, what does all this stuff do? Rather than having, you know, a line that says interdepartmental tree stuff.
No, we got you, got you, sir, accountability and transparency is important.
No, I, I'm just saying in terms of your staff capacity and so forth, it never occurred to me. But that kind of will be part of it, anyway.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Nutting. Go ahead and try now.
Here we go, there we go, uh, being allowed to participate now. My only, my question is, is, um, as an enterprise fund, uh, the surface water management would, would pay the city for an easement through, um, let's just say a tree canopy area? Is, is that correct?
So, Councilmember Nutting, what, uh, what, what we've done, I mean, anything is possible, it hasn't been decided yet. But what's been done, what I've done in the past is, is that we've transferred the easement rights or the ownership rights to the parcels in exchange for future long-term maintenance costs. So you're absorbing the liability of the maintenance instead of actually paying for the actual property right.
Okay, that, that, that makes sense, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oxiger and then Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Yes, thank you. Once again, I know you said it during the presentation, but what is the distinction between a cluster and a forest?
Yeah, so, and these all relate to stormwater benefit. So anything less than a cluster wouldn't trigger a benefit to the surface water utility. So a cluster is defined as an area, a grouping of trees larger than ten thousand square feet. And then a fourth, forest is anything larger than point seven-five acre.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you, um, it's hard for you to dangle a policy question in front of me and then not have a discussion about it. But I do think that would help us get to that policy question that Council, uh, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz brought up. Would be greater detail in that map. Love to see the next presentation come back with more slides, maybe even broken up into districts. Because when I think of twenty-nine percent canopy, I think that's great, but I also want to know where it is. And if it is absent in certain parts of the city, then maybe you talk about your strategy being, uh, district by district. Or you have your goal be by walkability, how fast can you get to a forest when you're living in northeast, uh, uh, Des Moines? Which looks pretty yellow on this map and not a lot of green space in it. And so having that level of detail would help inform some of those policymaking decisions. And I think it really, to me, would depend on what that information told us about where, uh, these were located. Uh, how much we can add to it. If there's a goal, how multi-layered can it be? Can it be how close it is to your house, um, how big it is around the city, encouraging, uh, it's private land owners to add another ten percent? That'd be fabulous, but we would need to have a great deal of information in order to move forward on that, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, hopefully these will be quick and, um, specific. Is the GIS mapping public or is it proprietary to parametrics?
I don't, I don't believe it's public, but I don't believe it's also, I think it's an open link, so I think we should, could share it.
I would love to see, I would love to see that. Have gotten a lot out of using the city's public, um, GIS layers. You key, you mentioned the word transfer and control, are those like RCW kind of terms? Do they have specific legal meaning, or is that just conceptual?
So, Councilmember Harris, are you talking about the property rights of a, of a, individual parcel?
Well, no, you mentioned transfer and control.
Well, so what, so, um, not meant to be an RCW rule, but I'm saying like, so let's say right now Parks owns steep slopes on, on a trail or in a, in, in a, uh, in Des Moines Creek or one of the other creeks, or Barnes Creek Trail, who knows? So Parks might own that parcel, um, and, and they own control and responsible for the maintenance of that parcel right now, because they're the owner. So if we transfer the parcel to the stormwater utility, then the stormwater utility would have control of that property for maintenance and future programming and planning and protection.
But ownership is something within our city code or within our administrative kind of a definition?
I, I'm not the attorney, so I'm going to, I'm going to, so I'm, what I'm saying, well, it's like fee ownership. If you own a piece of property, you own the piece of property. And, and properties are owned by the city and certain funds, is my understanding, would control that. Be, have the control of that property.
Okay, then what I'm really getting at is, does establishing this kind of program, are there specific carrots within the Department of Ecology or any other state agencies that make us more, uh, you know, amenable to obtaining various grants to support?
Oh, oh, a- absolutely, Councilmember Harris, matter of fact, that was, that was, well, that's, that question I can answer. There are, there are many programs within, uh, and granting opportunities within the Department of Al-, uh, uh, the Department of Ecology specifically regarding the MPDS permit for managing, um, managing, uh, these types of, of, uh, facility. We call them facilities, because the forest is a facility, it's part of a stormwater management program. And so we would manage them in that way. And we were able to get, um, for instance, on Schuster Parkway, we got over, uh, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to do erosion control stabilization and maintenance. Um, and we, and we did it all with natives, um, like we were talking about before, and removed all the ivies. Um, and then we, we placed in native trees and took out all the vine maples and the invasive trees. Um, and so there are, and it becomes basically a capital project at that point.
Okay, so is there a way like for the next go-around, maybe to enumerate what those opportunities might be?
A- absolutely, and that's the whole, the whole purpose is to grow this program to being able to exercise those opportunities.
Apart from numeracy on the number of trees, I also want to have some kind of idea of like, okay, you know, what funding is going to be available to prioritize those actions? That's it, thank you so much.
Thank you, so, uh, we do have another, uh, subject that we need to cover before the committee is over. I do have a couple of, uh, comments of my own, so I wanted to highlight a couple of things, questions and things that were said already. I'm, for one, I'm so impressed and excited about this, that this came to the table. And, um, Mike, I'm so glad that you're here and that you've got this experience. And then culminating with Tyler, ever since you've been here and I've, I've been here and worked with you. I've been so impressed with your passion to do all things environmental protection. You've done so many things, and this is just another amazing, uh, initiative to bring to the table. And it, I've been, um, very, I'm a tree hugger really at heart. And I've always wanted something really transformative, and I feel like this has a potential to be incredible. I do also want to compliment the city of Des Moines, uh, you know, you mentioned Tacoma's goal, I think is twenty-nine percent or thirty percent. And we're already there. And so, but that doesn't say, oh, we should sit on our lease about it, so I'm so thrilled that we're moving forward with this. I also did want to observer, observe that, you know, Councilmember Grace Matsui, uh, asked about other public land that hasn't been inventoried, that belongs to Des Moines, but potential is coming. For example, the, um, the ten acres of the, the business park that is going to be kind of part of the trail system and come right through Des Moines, and I don't know if that's going to be transferred to us, but it's ten more acres right up there in the business park. And then that whole swath of, which is now washout property, they're going through, taking all the invasives, putting that Barnes Creek Trail extension right through the middle of town, planting it with indigenous. So, and that's supposed to be coming to us in ten years. So, you know, we've got these, this, these big chunks of tree canopy that will be transferred to us in the future that I'm excited about too. That's, you know, part, like that ten acres is going to be all planted with indigenous, and that's not even part of the inventory. So, uh, very excited about what's coming for our trees, so, thank you so much. And that's all we have, so we're on to the next thing. And if you have any further questions, send them in or keep them in your back pocket. All right, so next up, uh, we did want to, we did have an, a, an agenda item for this committee meeting that was withdrawn from the agenda as far as the presentation, but we wanted to speak a little bit to it and ask a couple of questions. So I'm going to, uh, pass the baton to Ca-, uh, City Manager Catherine Cafrey.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, the agenda originally, as you all know, had two additional items. One was a second item at the five o'clock hour, and then a related item that was under new business. Both were related to the Department of Commerce grant that the council accepted last October. Related to look at the economic impact from the ferry pilot from a few years ago. Uh, we wanted to share why we pulled it. In just the last few days, we've had some, um, promising conversations with King County, both, um, several King County council members, which I think the mayor will discuss, as well as King County Metro, the marine division. That, uh, they are seriously interested in looking at pursuing demand studies of their own and a feasibility analysis of their own for this potential route. So with that in mind, it felt like the grant that we were bringing before you in many ways would be duplicative of the work they're going to start doing. As a reminder, that grant had no city match, it was a hundred percent funded through the Department of Commerce. So, um, I have a call scheduled with Commerce for next week to talk with them about what flexibility there may be to perhaps allow King County to do this work and use those funds potentially. And so we will keep you posted on that, but that's why it was pulled, because King County has expressed an interest in doing their own kind of route demand study for this work, um, since it has been the council's desire for them to operate this. So that makes sense for them to be doing that. So, uh, Mayor, did you want to add anything to that?
Well, sure, I, I did want to clarify, you know, so you just heard that, you know, we had a talk with a couple of King County council members. So, you know, our, our desire is not to expend funds or move forward, right? Um, with initiatives that aren't already authorized by the council. And, and also, on the flip side though, when, when initiatives do come to the, to the dais to make sure that, you know, we have enough information to ask, answer our good questions. And so there's a balance of how much work do you do and how much engagement do you get involved with without bringing it to the council? Pretty soon, you're getting in pretty deep and it needs to be brought, right? So this is kind of the, this nexus right here, where, um, trying to, now, trying to be wise, trying to be responsible, but trying to be transparent. So, uh, so we arranged for this lunch, knowing that this still, the ferry was still an initiative here. Um, at the ti-, and Peter's contract was still, um, active. And we had already expressed several times that the only way we could do the ferry is if King County, um, paid for it. They bought, got a vote for us, so. So I was, I am a little bit, and, and what have been a little bit, like, are you guys really interested? Because if you're not, you need to be really frank with us. I was kind of like that across the table, like, tell us now, because this is a lot of work. And, um, and they did not say that. They were still kind of excited. And, and it wasn't just, we, we were at lunch with two of them, but I've, you know, kind of got a line on a couple more. There's, there is an appetite on the King County Council for this. And so, so I thought, and then I think, uh, Council, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and Peter Phillips took, uh, Councilmember Moskata a- actually out over to the site, she was even more excited. So, um, that said, I'm, um, come on in, have a seat. So, uh, there- So, uh, there's actually, so just to summarize, there's actually excitement and an appetite in, on the council. Shh, please. Um, King County needs studies though, to, in order to engage, they need an official partnership in order to, to really move forward and they need it in their budget or include it if there's an underspend. So we're looking for a way to make that even more possible. So if there is a way, I think our, uh, City Manager is going to be visiting with Commerce and depending on what they say, we'll try and engage our councilman, the council members again, um, see if there's a possible way to help King County move forward with the things that they are desiring. And this is all still in regard to really the Des Moines specific site. They're not, the, the conversation we had in there, that, that peak interest, it's not necessarily about any, but increasing any other ferry runs for Metro. Really, this is the, this is the one that they're interested in right now. So, uh, that's why we had the lunch, that's why we had the talk, that's why we're doing this. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to go and clarify a comment. Um, Peter's contract actually expired June 30th, so he does not have an active contract with the city right now or any type of ongoing arrangement, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So, um, any questions about that? Councilmember Harris?
So, not to be, um, euphemistic, but you're, uh, you basically are talking about transferring this grant over to King County so they can do their, basically to help them do the study?
Not necessarily transfer, though, I don't know, that needs to be looked into, but it would be more, this is my read on it, it would be more in line with, uh, one of the things that they came back to us with is, well, we would need an ILA with partners, such as an ILA with Des Moines that stated these specific things. So it would be something like, we would engage if, if, I mean, so many things would have to fall in line, but engage with, either with an Iowa, an ILA or an MOU that said, establish a partnership and then it would be more like a pass through. So, I don't, they would become a partner with us.
Does the grant expire at a certain time?
Yeah, the, the grant expires at the end of the year and that's why my call with Commerce is next week. I'm not sure if we'll be able to transfer or simply King County will need to submit for a grant. Um, so we don't know how that's going to work, that's why we need to have that call, but I have heard several council members here, I think maybe even you, Councilmember Harris, comment that, you know, King County needs to show the interest in this and take the lead, so we took it as a very good sign that they wanted to do that. So it felt, um, duplicative to, to do this work ourselves as well.
Well, not to sound, you know, however, but basically if somebody offers me $160,000 to study something, I mean, I'm going to take it. Um, so I would ask if there is any flexibility in us retaining the money for some other economic development work. I mean, just consider that sincerely as you gauge their interests, because who turns down free money?
Sure, no, I'll absolutely be asking that. I anticipate we'll be told that's a new application, but I'll definitely bring that up.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? All right. So that looks good. Okay, well, that is the end of our items for committee of the whole. So the committee is adjourned and we'll see you in a few minutes.
The April 3, 2022, oh, sorry, no, I'm just kidding. The July 10, 2025, Des Moines City Council Study Session is now called to order. Wrong page, look at that, I really did make a mistake. It is a regular business meeting tonight, it's not a study session. So anyways, now called to order, Councilmember Grace Matsui is now going to lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to all of the public joining us tonight, welcome and thank you for attending. For those watching online or on Channel 21, please know that we cannot attend to our phones from the dais during the meeting. However, if you experience technical problems, please email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. Okay, thank you. Let the record show that all council members are present and that Councilmember Nutting is participating remotely. Do we have any correspondence not previously received by council?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, now it's time for comments from the public. We ask that you please keep your comments respectful. As a special note, if this is campaign season, many of you know, and we can't receive comments that could be viewed as promoting candidates during public comments. So thank you for complying with that. When you do come to the podium, you all have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and city of residence. We do have a few people signed up tonight. First up is Sheena Muston, is that how you say that? Hi, Sheena, come on up.
Hello. So probably about a week ago, I went to the Des Moines Police Department to file a police report. And I feel like the gentleman that took my report was unprofessional. He kept answering the phone during my interview and he kept cutting me off. So I was very uncomfortable and I did file a complaint with them. So I wanted to meet with you, the mayor, and the chief of police to see if we can sit down. I don't feel like I had a fair investigation.
I'm not able to interact about that from this position tonight in a council meeting, but it looks like you, okay.
Is it possible to sit down and have a meeting, though? Not tonight, but is it possible to have a meeting?
You'll be meeting with me.
It would be, it would be, she's the city manager and she's his boss.
Okay.
That's how that works. So it looks like did you leave a phone number or contact information?
Yes, I need my email as well.
I'll follow up, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheena. Next up, Chuck Coleman.
Got a lot to cover here, guys. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, staff, and Des Moines citizens. For the record, Chuck Coleman, Redondo Beach Drive in Des Moines. On behalf of the nearly 300 members of the Redondo Community Association, many are here tonight. We want to thank the city staff, city manager Catherine Cafrey, Public Works Director Mike Slevin, and Adam O'Donnell, Chief, Police Chief Ted Bowe, Assistant Chief Penny, Sergeant Kreip, and all the police department staff, and especially Russ Higley and his staff at the Mass Center of Highland College for the highly successful first Shark in the Park event held this past Sunday in Wooten Park in the Redondo neighborhood. Russ and his staff accomplished an astounding feat pulling this event together. The RCA was proud to be part of this and sponsored four booths, three of which were staffed by hardworking RCA volunteers, some here tonight, with Shark-branded arts and crafts, and by our count, served well over 200 children with Shark crowns, puppets, and origami. I actually got some myself. The RCA welcoming booth was overwhelmed by sincere, positive comments from visitors from all over our region, as far away as North Seattle, Olympia, Tacoma, Gig Arbor, and Piala. This was quite a draw. Our welcome booth ordered 160 Shark glasses for kids and we ran out in the first two hours. This is amazing. The number of families and many children present reinvigorated the RCA's mission to provide a clean, vibrant, educational, safe waterfront destination for everyone to enjoy. To further those goals, the RCA also thanks Mayor Buxton, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and other city council members for their past vocal support for the Redondo Pier reconstruction project. As we have stated before, the pier has tremendous social return on investment for our city and our region. We're excited to be here tonight as council authorizes Item 1, unfinished business Redondo Fishing Pier construction contract with Redside Construction from Bainbridge Island and the Exel Tech Consultant Agreement. We welcome Redside to our community and look forward to seeing construction begin. Item number two, under new business, Item 2, City Strategic Plan Consulting Agreement with Raftellus. The RCA strongly favors the research and creation of a strategic plan for our city. In our complicated world, we realize that without a roadmap, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to get to a destination. We live in demanding times and effective, efficient governance requires a roadmap. Our city has many challenges ahead and that is at a crucial point in its growth and development. Raftellus appears to have the experience needed to create such a roadmap for our city and we strongly encourage approval of this construction, this consulting agreement. I did it. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Chuck, that was well said. What a nice appreciation, I really appreciate hearing from you about all those. Very nice. Okay, next up, Karen Sharpe.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff, and everyone here this evening. I'm Karen Sharpe, I live in Des Moines, Washington. I'm here this evening representing the Redondo Community Association. We are offering our strong support for Ordinance 25-065, which would designate and regulate no cruising areas within the city of Des Moines, including along Redondo Beach Drive. Cruising has long posed significant challenges in our city and in our neighborhood, especially during the warmer months and on weekends throughout the year. The cruising impacts our community, the cruising impacts in our community have been significant and very disruptive, including prolonged traffic congestion, loud and repeated engine noise, screeching tires, littering, public disorder, and safety concerns for everyone who comes to visit the boardwalk and the pier on a daily basis. While our key local business, Salties, has been unfortunately closed for a while, cruising is a key issue impacting small businesses in our community. We appreciate that the anti-cruising ordinance has been thoughtfully crafted to address these issues, to balance enforcement with fairness, designating the Redondo Beach Drive, the Marina Parking Lot, and Marine View Drive as no cruising zones. These are the most acute areas currently experienced in our city and I know the ordinance also has parameters to expand the no cruise zones in the future. The ordinance establishes a clear and enforceable definition of cruising. It provides appropriate exemptions for residents, emergency services, and others with a legitimate reason to be in the area. It applies a civil infraction rather than a criminal charge, which we believe is a practical and just approach. While enforcement resources will continue to be challenging and we know that policing for cruising will continue to be a challenge, this ordinance gives the Des Moines Police a much-needed tool to respond when problems arise. It complements existing noise ordinances while focusing specifically on the pattern of behavior that creates this disruption. We urge you to adopt Ordinance 25-065 and we appreciate your responsiveness to this significant community issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So I have no others who have signed up. Is there anybody who came tonight wishing to speak during public comment but did not realize they needed to sign in? Come around, okay. All right, next up, we have our regional committee reports. We're not currently operating with our historical committees. However, several council members do serve at regional tables and this is an opportunity for them to share items that might be of concern or interest specifically to our Des Moines residents. So are there any council members that have a report out for, all right, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, last night, I attended the Sound Cities Association's Public Interest or Public Issues Committee. Always want to get those mixed up. It was a packed agenda with lots of really good discussion. Among the, you know, most interesting things are the King County Transportation District Sales Tax that is being proposed. It is another 0.1% that is going to add to the amount of sales tax that's going on and we had a long discussion about the, you know, essentially the tax fatigue and the impact and whether, as an organization, Sound Cities Association, wanted to try to address that. And ultimately, that is exactly what we decided to do. Secondly, is we had a long discussion about the indigent defense caseload standards. And for those that aren't familiar with this, the Supreme Court has essentially set caseload standards for public defense and then set about a 10-year period for implementing those caseload standards. They, they're essentially an unfunded mandate for a very serious problem. It's of constitutional issue. You are entitled, if you are charged with a crime, you are entitled to a lawyer by both the Washington State Constitution and the federal constitution, and there has to be a certain level of adequacy. And slowly but surely, there's been a creep in the caseload count going up. But by setting standards, it's going to bring that down, there's no funding available. And most of the discussion last night, there was an agreement among the cities that yes, this is a good and valuable thing, but it's also an unfunded mandate and so that needs to be our focus. And we will, the staff at SEA will begin drafting a letter that will go through a process. The letter will go to both the Supreme Court and to the state legislature, talking about how these are going to simply require more information. Among the other things that were discussed is the criminal justice sales tax, which is currently before the King County Council. There is an overview that has come out with all of the county tax proposals and levies to date, which sets out how much, you know, whether those are going to be increases, whether they're just maintaining the status quo, or if they're an increase in the status quo. And then the committee itself is doing a little revamp of how we want to act, the Public Issues Committee. And then there was more discussion, sort of internal, that I'm not necessarily going to share because I don't think it's of that big an interest how it goes. But, and then, you know, they always do a ballot, levies and ballot measures that are going to be out there. And in, let's see, for 2025, there are two more coming that are county and 2026. There's another one coming and then there are special district ballot measures coming. There's one, two, three, four more of those. It's just, everybody needs some funding and they're trying to figure out where to find it. So, you know, this is when you hear us talking about where are we going to find the money for something, please know, we're not the only city around that's having this problem. All the cities are having this problem and we're trying to figure out how to solve problems locally rather than trying to suck all the oxygen to the city, to the county, or, you know, higher up to the state. So it was a very good meeting, though. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question of clarification in regard to the caseload standards. So just to sum it up, for clarity's sake, are you saying with the new, what they mean by caseload standards is they're saying public defenders can only take so many cases and that means if we get too many cases in and we don't have enough attorneys to assign these people, cases can get dropped?
Potentially, is there that they will be dismissed because of that, because that's a constitutional right if we simply don't have enough lawyers to do that?
Okay.
There are two problems with that. One is just simply the funding mechanism to hire those lawyers, but also to make sure that there are enough lawyers coming into the system that are willing to practice criminal defense.
So that was my second question. I have heard from people that if this is carried out over a few years, that we don't even have enough attorneys in the state of Washington to cover the amount of cases that will end up coming through our municipal courts, is that true? I mean, is that part of what they're?
I have not heard that.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that that is some of the concern. Okay, well, anybody else serve at a regional table and have a report out that they would like to share? Okay, next up, we have the city manager report. I'll turn the baton over to City Manager Catherine Cafrey.
Mayor and council, we have a couple of items tonight. As Jeff gets up here, first, we have a piece of good news, although his policies are good news as well. But the council may recall that the city submitted a grant application to the King County Conservation Futures Grant Program for the purchase of 16.4 acres located behind Wooten Park in the Redondo area. We have received confirmation from King County that the city of Des Moines is recommended to get the full grant, so that goes to the King County Council for a vote. King County Council has to vote for it, but hopefully they will. And then final approvals, grant agreement, everything comes towards the end of the year, but the property is under contract, so that's not an issue. But there was some really great news, especially in light of the conversation we just had about tree canopy, because that would be 16.4 acres of forested area. So just wanted to share that. So follow that up, Jeff. Jeff is going to real briefly go through the investment policy and the credit card policy. The reason why these are both on here, they were originally just on consent. Depending on the council's discussion later on regarding the protocol manual, you all have expressed the desire to bring back two readings on ordinances. So technically, these come before you would vote on that, but the mayor felt like it was important in the spirit of that to at least get you guys a little bit of information off of consent on these first. But they will remain on consent for your consideration in a few minutes. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, members of the public. Jeff Friend, Finance Director. 1995, who remembers where they were in 1995? Well, 30 years ago was when the investment policy and credit card policy were adopted to code and have not been updated since. So as part of the effort to review financial policies, get them updated, we have worked on the investment policy and the credit card policy. So the other impetus for looking at the investment policy is also the Washington Public Treasurers Association has a certification program. And so we use that as a guide while working on the investment policy. We'd like to, if we can have a third-party certified policy the city has, then I think that builds trust with the public. As part of the process also, while working on this, our broker reviewed the policy. They are very familiar with many cities' investment policies as they do a lot of municipal work. Our broker is Time Value Investments. And this policy was also brought to Finance Committee on April 3. So just to highlight a couple of changes that are in the policy, there's quite a few. One is that there'd be an annual review of the policy instead of reviewing it every 30 years. There's also a questionnaire for any brokers that we'd be working with that brings in more information, like about their financial statements and their experience, et cetera, than is in the current policy. Changes the performance benchmark from market rates to the rate in the LGIP. Because really, for cities, we're either going to, if we're going to invest, well, usually invest in bonds or we'll have it in the local government investment pool that the state has. So the LGIP right now, the rate is 4.4%. And also, it brings us in alignment with state law. For example, no one in 1995 knew what cryptocurrency was. State law prohibits investment in cryptocurrencies, so we're able to capture that, have a more current framework. And also, it brings it in line with state law regarding investment reporting. For example, the reports we provide counsel every month and it establishes what a quarterly report would look like versus a monthly report. Our reports to counsel are always kind of like the quarterly report every month. So it doesn't really affect our reporting now, but it does capture it in the policy. So the conclusion really is that what this does for the city and the public is it creates a clear and current framework for our investment policy, aligns it with state law, and builds trust with stakeholders. And why is it not working? Keyboard did not work, the change aside, there we go. On the credit card policy, the credit card policy is mainly an administrative policy. However, if we want to change the maximum limits of the cards, we do need council approval for that. And the reason that staff have credit cards, or what we call P cards, is really for efficiency on the accounts payable side. Yet, we can pay vendors faster and also if we're making a purchase, like if there's a maintenance person that all of a sudden needs something, you know, from Lowe's or wherever urgently, then they can go down to Lowe's and get that. And there's internal controls in place where all receipts are reviewed by supervisors and then after that review, the bill is paid. So the increase that we are proposing is to increase the maximum limit from $5,000 to $10,000. In 1995, dollars, so $5,000 from 1995 is like $10,574 in 2025. And then there's 33 of, the cards would not have a limit of $10,000, they'd have it less. So certain cards would have a maximum limit of $10,000 and then, you know, others, less. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, let's see here. Regarding the safekeeping and custody thing, is the monthly report a public document to your mind?
I would think so, yes.
It may just be me, but in the reporting section, I guess that's 17, is it, is there any possibility for some kind of like, you know, year-on-year performance kind of a deal? I'm just, is there a way to track what are, you know, basically how we've been doing for like the past five years?
As far as the yield of our?
Yeah, like bond yields, interest, just essentially something, yeah, because I'm just struck how we do get the, you've been very good about quarterly reports and everything, but they're always now.
Right.
And I just, and I'm just thinking about like the LGIP, it's like one point higher a couple of years ago and I'm just...
Yeah, I think that we could take a look at doing that. When we're, right now, I think in terms of that year-to-year, when our bonds are maturing now and we're making new purchases, that's also another way that's in the monthly and quarterly report. You can see the yield we're investing in now, which tends to be around 4.5% and what's coming off of our portfolio. Right now, our bonds that were bought during the pandemic that were yielding like 0.5%. So that would be one way to look at it, but we can look at doing a year-to-year performance.
I don't want to push you on the spot because I don't know what kind of reporting they offer, but I just think it would be interesting to be able to say, okay, here was our debt service, here was our, you know, basically our portfolio, 2020, 2021, just some kind of summary type of a deal.
What we get, it looks a lot like a bank statement and then we take that information and that's what's in your report that you see every month. So, but we can look at the year-to-year.
Darn. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you very much for the presentation. One of the things that I, I'm going to get to a question, but I want to say, I love code cleanup. I think it's so good that I'm excited to hear you say that we're looking through these and updating policies from 1995. September 95 would have been our run on the American League championship, so I know where I was. When, do you happen to know when the state law was updated so that we couldn't invest in cryptocurrency? Like how out of date are we from the RCW?
I'd have to check, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I think, I mean, obviously, I think it's the last couple of years.
Okay, so we've been out of compliance for more than a year?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Okay, that's what I wanted to get at, thank you very much. I think that while these are not fun ordinances and updates, I think that they ensure that we are aware of the restrictions that we're under in terms of investment and policy and keeping up with current issue. I find it actually hard that staff can only spend $5,000. If that would have been my credit limit, I wouldn't have been able to do business this year with some of the projects I work on. So I'm surprised you haven't had a riot over there saying I need like six credit cards to make this purchase. So I love these kinds of cleanups, but thank you for doing them.
All right, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I kind of have a follow-up to that, which is, give us some sense of what a $10,000 purchase on a credit, on a city credit card would be rather than through a purchase order department and why? Can you sort of lay it out in terms that us poor lawyers who don't do numbers could understand?
Yeah, so there's, I mean, because citywide staff have cards, so that's a large variety of transactions. The larger transactions we get, I think one is mentioned in the packets, that the account's payable, card pays for utility bills citywide. Another one that can come up is perhaps the police need to purchase, say, bulletproof vests and it's, you know, say that's $20,000. And that would be a situation where the Finance Director would allow a temporary increase to make that purchase if they deemed that, you know, appropriate. So I think that there are times with, between Public Works and the police especially, where there's just like one purchase and it's big. That's not something that happens every month. So it might be a couple of times a year where that happens, where we get a request like, I'm purchasing, you know, not a car, though I think we might have bought a car on a P card once.
Can you talk about IT as well?
Oh, yeah, and IT. So IT pays for a lot of maintenance contracts for different systems that we have in the city. So that would be an example. Those are annual, so they tend to be large and over $10,000. So that would be opposed to somebody needing some nails from Lowe's or some office supplies that they order online for their job.
So really, just a more, an easier, more fungible way to have payment ready when you got to go buy what you got to go buy?
Right.
As opposed to going through the process of getting a check cut and in the mail?
Exactly.
Okay, but there's still, you still feel there are sufficient controls over that because it's going to be something like an IT maintenance contract or, you know, bulletproof vests that the chief is not getting together with his assistant chief and putting their cards together?
Right, well, and, I mean, another control is, you know, perhaps like, well, some person bought... Well, and, I mean, another control is, you know, perhaps like, well, some person bought coffee for themselves, like, and maybe they accidentally used the wrong card. Well, the state doesn't care if it's accidental, honest mistake, but that'd be a situation where the money is recovered. It's still viewed like, auditors would not like that, the state, I mean, even an honest mistake, but mistakes happen. So money would be recovered from the employee for that, even if it's like $3. So, so there's that control. I think I lost my train of thought as far as controls, but there's a workflow. For example, the accounts payable card, I think the packet mentions there's about 65 transactions a month or so. And I know that number well because I'm the one that has the review, the invoices they come through, look sure that everything is, is an allowable purchase and that, you know, the invoice is valid, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Just hopefully two quick things. This doesn't change anything on the voucher reports, right?
No.
Okay. Second, is there, just internally, is there a lower dollar amount that you get an email? Like, in other words, if somebody spends $4,000, does Jeff get an email that says somebody spent $4,000 even though their credit limit is 10?
No, if they're within their credit limit, then no, there'd be no notification of that.
Okay, thanks.
Jeremy, you good up there? Councilmember Nutting, you good up there? All right. Councilmember Oxker.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. How often do you anticipate needing to upgrade this policy?
I don't think it would be very often. We'd probably review it every couple of years, I would think. I don't, it doesn't, I don't think inflation would affect, because this is just a maximum limit.
Right.
People aren't spending up to their maximum limit on every card every month, so.
So, and the 10,000 then is, is this just simply doubling of the five, or is there a philosophy behind the?
I'd say also, this is pretty standard for cities of our size, like, these amounts are not unusual. So we didn't do a benchmark for this, but if you asked me to, they'd all be around. Most people get $1,000 or $3,000 limits if they're like, you know, an admin who's ordering office supplies or something. Handful of people have higher amounts like that, and it's pretty common for organizations like this.
Okay, well, with the, the reason for my question is that we're, we're already, you know, if you're, if you're looking at the comparables between 1995 and now, we're already a good deal of the way beyond it. And I'm wondering if we, in order to have, not have to visit this again, you know, relatively soon or anything, if we just pushed it to 12. That way, we're not gonna have, you know, the problem, or not gonna have the issue coming back for a while.
I mean, if the council would like to make it higher, that's fine. There's very few employees that even have that 10,000 amount. I think I don't, Jeff took it away. What am I, I mean, he was like, I'm lowering your credit limit. So, yeah, if the council would like to move to 12, we're happy to do that. That being said, I think 10 will also be adequate for a while.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to make a motion, or you're good?
I can make a motion for discussion, or, I mean, I don't trust the poll other than, you know, I guess break it up, so.
Well, and, yeah, this is the city manager report, so you would pull it at time of consent. So you have a few minutes to think about it. So, Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a question. On the credit cards, so do, do department heads sit down with staff and ask what, do they reconcile the receipts at the end of the month? I guess, ask where, what the money has been spent on and where it was spent, and does it get, does it get allocated to the accounts appropriated?
Yeah, so if there's, a user of a P card would retain their receipts, and those receipts are entered into our accounting system, and there's an approval workflow. So once the employee provides the receipts for that credit card bill that is associated with them, they would submit it, and then that submission goes to their supervisor, and their supervisor would review each of the invoices and then the account coding associated with each invoice and cost. And then when the supervisor approves, and then that goes to the accounts payable clerk.
Okay, thank you. Just, just so it's not going coded to the general fund at, you know, it's just getting coded to the projects needed or whatever is in, in need of whatever has been purchased.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, it's like we're good.
Yep.
That's all you have for the city managers' court? Okay, good. So the next item up then, or moving on to consent, could the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, investment policy update. Item three, credit card policy update. Item four, therapeutic court grant update. Item five, 10th and 270th construction contract award, and that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read, Mayor.
Do you have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second. Is there an item that a council member wishes to pull?
I mean, the question is a waste of time.
She did say it was adequate.
I think we're fine.
She says she thinks we're fine.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. All right, without anything pulled, all in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's a 7-0. Thank you so much. Moving on to unfinished business, first thing up is the subject of the Redondo Fishing Pier Award. The purpose of this item is to consider the contract awards for the Redondo Fishing Pier and associated items. We'll have a presentation from our Public Works Director, Mike Slevin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mike Slevin, Public Works Director. So just real quick, we've got a quick presentation for you about our recent bid and, and the company. Oh, thank you so much. So the background we have is that the pier as it exists right now was constructed in 1980. I believe the pilings were there longer than that, but we, there was a grant that we were able to find through RCO. We actually had to clear that grant in order to reconstruct, so there was a grant in 1980 to maintain what was there now. In '23, the city approved a bond of $26 million for the Marina and Ron, Redondo redevelopment, and the Redondo Fishing Pier replacement project was one of those projects, and we've discussed those projects many times here in front of this council. In 2024, we had a bid opening for the combined Redondo Fishing Pier and the restroom replacement project. The bid exceeded engineering estimate and it was rejected. We talked, we've talked previously in councils that the reasons for why that, that cost was high and why it was rejected. And at that point, we split out the Redondo restroom project from the Redondo Fishing Pier project, and we proceeded with a, the Redondo restroom project, and then we went to redesign the pier and put the pier back out to bid. The pier project was advertised for bids in June, and we opened them up on July 1st, and we had very good news. Oops, there we go. The bid results we had were within the engineer's estimate or close to it. So Redside Construction LLC from Bremerton was the low-responsive bidder at $3,773,986.34. And so that was, and we did our research on Redside. This project is well within their means. They have a great, a great project portfolio that they performed over the years. I have some pictures here for you for that. Quig Brothers also had a very reasonable bid at 4.354,968,94, and then we had one outlier that was much higher. The engineer's estimate was at $4,367,697.75. So we're very happy with, with the bids that we received. So Redside Construction, these are some of the projects that they've, they've done that are similar to our project at Redondo, the Ballard Tunnel Pier Replacement. That was a $9.3 million project. The Gene Colom Park Pier in Renton at $4.8 million, and the Bainbridge Dock Replacement at $1.8 million. So they've done a lot of this similar construction. Their portfolio is much larger than these projects. I just pulled these three out to share with you that this is well within what their capabilities are, and they've done some very good work in the region. The consultant services contract for construction administration, so we're building this contract, and we really don't have the expertise in marine construction, and so we're gonna be going out, we did an RFP in 2023 for construction admin and inspection services for the pier and the restroom project. Exaltech, ours already done the restroom, and they're still on board, so we want to add them for the, the pier also. And they were selected back in the 2023 as the best for this particular project for us. They've, they've done other projects in the past, including the Boardwalk, the North Marina Bulkhead, they just finished the restroom replacement. So they are, we're very familiar with working with them, and they've done good construction services for us in the past. So total project budget, we've gone back and forth and explained, we finally have final numbers now, right? We've talked about how these numbers move around a lot because there's a lot of different variables in a construction contract and bid. So the original design and permitting for both facilities was at $649,000. The pier redesign that the council voted on earlier this year that we went forward with while we were still working on the permit, and so that reason why we're able to build this year is because the council actually took that effort to push both forward simultaneously, even though there was some risk in that, it paid off. We redesigned the pier at $211,000, the construction bid of 3.774. The contingency we're carrying is about $566,000, and then, which is a little higher than normal, and that's on purpose. Marine construction can be difficult, right? So it's, it's about 5% higher than we would normally carry at the 10%. And then construction admin and inspection, this is the Exaltech contract at $611,000. So that brings the total pier cost, all-in, design project at $5.811 million. The project that we rejected last year was 10.668. So when you add the bathroom into that, you're at about 8.3, so we're a good 2.3 million lower than the previous bid from last year. So before you are the suggested motions, I think we have an Amber Alert going on, but the, so the first motion is as read, is I move to, I'll, I'll let you guys read through those and, and take them, but the first motion is for the, to bring the budget forward for the capital program for 2025 to include the amended Redondo Pier Replacement Project as described herein, which is in the packet, including such amendments in the available budget. So we need to move the monies around within the bond funds and all the rest of those to accomplish this, so that's the first motion. The second motion is I move to approve public works contract with Redside Construction. This is for the construction of the actual pier replacement project in the amount of the contract of 3.773.986.34. Authorize the project construction contingency of $566,000, and further authorize the city manager to sign the contract as the form submitted. And then motion three is to approve the consultant services contract for Exaltech to provide the construction administration and inspection services for the Redondo Fishing Pier Project at $610,472, and further authorize the city manager to sign the task assignment substantially in form submitted. So those are the three requests we have for you today.
Thank you. So do we have any questions before the motion? Councilmember Mahoney.
So the contingency, 566K, right? With the tariffs and so forth going on, I assume that if we approve this, almost immediately they're gonna procure the items that could be sus, suspect to, or of tariffs?
Yes, we've, this, we've already talked with Redside, and they're already online to get, get their stuff on order. They have, you know, they have their prices in their bid, and they've got their prices, my understanding their prices are fixed right now until they can get them fixed. So they're comfortable that they're gonna be able to procure the steel we need locally. That's the biggest piece right there.
Great to hear. I mean, in recent news, you know, there's, there's new uncertainty, so I just want to make sure. Thank you. Excellent presentation.
Councilmember Nutting and the Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question is, is so Exaltech is going to be hired as the consultant and the special inspector, so there won't be, are, are we going to expend funds from our building department inspecting the same thing that a special inspector would be funding and, I'm sorry, not be funding, but inspecting, and, and are we just going to rely on Exaltech as a special inspector?
Councilmember Nutting, I believe, I will get back to you on that, but I'm pretty sure, I just want to confirm, but I'm pretty sure that the special inspector will be a sub to Exaltech for the welding and those, and the pile driving and those types of things, so it won't be our, I mean, our, our city inspectors will come out to do normal inspection with guards, make sure we're within the plans, but the special inspection is, is part of the consulting contract.
And, and so like the rebar cages or anything like that with the?
If there's steel, special steel inspection would be through Exaltech, and they're gonna have a sub do that, is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yep. Given that there's the fish window, which I believe starts in February 2026, so.
So, Councilmember, the fish window starts August 1st, which is why we were in such a rush, and ends February 15th. So we need to be, so when we, if this contract were to pass tonight, if this, if this, if this is, motions were to pass tonight, we would execute the contract with Redside, and then they would immediately be procuring all the equipment they need to do that. We don't have their schedule yet, they need to get us their schedule, or the doouts, because we have a contract, but in discussions with them today, it, they, they believe that they would be, you know, first moving on site at the end of September, early October, by the time they got, got the stuff that they need to construct. And that gives them the time to get, to pull the old pier, get the steel in, and then they're out of the water by February 15th. The project won't be complete by February 15th, but that gets them out of the water, and then they could be doing the decking and all the rest of that stuff and the flatwork.
And out of the water by February 15th is, is the hard deadline?
That is the hard deadline, absolutely.
Fish window.
Correct.
That's, that's what I was referring to, I didn't quite have it correct. And is there any penalty if they're not?
Yes, there's gonna be, we're gonna end up halting construction if we don't, we cannot go past that date. That is a hard date. So we would end up, we would end up stopping construction at that point, and then we're gonna have a whole series of issues with delays and, and those types of issues, yes.
But what is the penalty built into the contract if?
I don't have.
Contractor doesn't get there.
I don't have that at the top of my, off the top of my head.
But there is something.
Yes. There would be standard contractual procedures that they would be held responsible.
But that, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Oh, Tim?
Yeah, we have a liquidated damages formula that's in the, in the construction contract, so it's based on the number of days that they have to do the work and the contract value. So there's a formula in there if they're not done on time. Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Harris.
So, yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna put you on the spot. Do you have, you know, any kind of like, you know, cone of risk, as they like to say over at the port, of making that February deadline? I, I'm just, you know, 40%.
Councilmember Harris, in talking with the contractor and the other, the other contractors that bid, they were all comfortable that they can meet this deadline.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, Councilmember Oxker.
Is the plan to keep the boat launch open during this construction period?
The boat launch is, for the majority of the time, should be open. Talking with the harbor master and working through those, there are times it will be closed. Until we see their schedule, we won't know what those times are. So it will, there will be closures, and there will be impacts with the construction, and there may be some limited access during some times, but the goal is to keep it open as much as physically possible.
And is there still, is it still planned to use the, the parking lot as staging area?
Correct. The back of the parking lot is where we're hoping we will be using for staging, and as a matter of fact, we delayed the reskinning of that parking lot until after this construction as part of the, it was originally part of the restroom, but we knew we were gonna end up scraping it up and damaging it if we reskinned it, so we held that and added that to this contract.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Harris.
Okay, but just in case things get uncomfortable, how soon could you have a number for next year in case they don't make it by February? In other words, I, if. In other words, it might be good to, you know, say that it's X million dollars extra if it goes another year.
I, I don't think I would have that number until we know where they are, when they stop, and how they stop, councilmembers, so it's really a play by, play by ear. Every, you know, the enemy gets it, the weather has a choice, the enemy gets a shot, right?
No, 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 but I get it, but there should be some way to quantify if we, if they are, if they are stuck, there will, there will be some floor cost to moving it into another year.
Well, there might be a baseline cost for the delay and the timeline on, on demobbing and mobbing, but you're not going to know until, do they get stuck at 10% of the project? Do they get stuck at 95% of the project? So you really, it's very, you wouldn't know until, until it was, became a problem.
Yeah, maybe the 12.
There you go.
Okay, all right. No, I'm just, I'm just thinking about, you know, like a 13-foot exchange, and never mind. Okay, thank you.
I can just add to that. In the contract, it's, the liquidated damages have been computed, it's 5,146 dollars per day if they're not done on time, but then, you know, construction contracts are complicated, and there could be change orders, and there could be issues that, you know, that are not the contractor's fault. And so those would, would be all things that we would have to work out during the, during the term of the contract.
Actual construction, councilmember, is, it's an actively managed item, and there are, there are, there's no, there's no definites until you're done. I think, I think I got councilmember Nutting to smile over there. He knows what I'm talking about.
Okay. Any other questions? We're good? All right. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the motion number one.
Yeah, motion number one, I move to direct administration to bring forward a budget amendment to the 2025, 2030 capital improvement plan and the 2025 capital budget to include the amended Redondo Fishing Pier Replacement Project as described herein, and include such amendment in the next available budget amendment ordinance.
Second. I'm going to give that to councilmember Mahoney for the second. Any discussion?
Just, okay, it's back. Okay, thank you.
You're good?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we could see what the motion, what the motion in the packet is saying, so.
Right. Thank you.
I am reading it off of the packet.
Yeah. And I am too, so, councilmember Mahoney.
It's a good day. We've been trying to get this done for years, we've run into all kinds of strange things, COVID, you know, overbids and so much more, and it's a good day. It's finally going to start happening. I'll get excited the day the bulldozers show up in the parking lot more than I am today, but I'm excited for this. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Councilmember Harris.
Don't take the following as anything other than gratitude, you're getting it done and everything like that, but so often I feel like that slave at the back of the triumph, sick transit Gloria. When I got on the council, it is unbelievable how much less this project would have cost, and now with the debt service, it will cost a lot more. And my only point is that, as in the previous discussions, we always focus on now, and we're, you know, we're winning now, but by not having the money we've needed, if, you know, you're just constantly pushing things off into the future, and you're making the future people pay for things, and there are millions more, and at some point, I understand the constant desire to focus on getting this thing done, getting this thing done now, but it is that inability to save for the future and think about what will happen that basically pushes millions of dollars off into future years. And I thank you for that, and just to end on a positive note, I appreciate that you have put effort into, you know, like the vehicle management program and things that really do think about that kind of future planning, but this to me is.
And nonimpressive.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah. Mr. Slevin, I think this is fantastic. We're really starting to get some stuff done. Whether we had the money to pay for it in the past or not, it's really not the point, the point is it's getting done. I think that your addition to this city has helped us move some of these projects forward, and that's really, really greatly appreciated. I'm very excited because I think the people of Redondo have been waiting a long time for this, and that, you know, there has been a lot of sort of slow degradation of the positive activity down in Redondo, the people fishing off the pier who are, you know, doing something more positive, and other things have happened that sort of taken its place, unfortunately, but I think that by creating the environment that we are getting this pier done is going to be a huge boon to the neighborhood of Redondo, and so I'm really excited, I'm very happy we did this, and I'm glad we're getting it done. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, I'd just like to say one thing, you know, the team here has been working on these projects much longer than I've been here, and Kylie has been working on this project for, you know, five years, and this is, this is his, from the restroom at the grand opening when his parents were here to now, this is his baby, and it, all I'm doing is just helping, helping move it along, but this is all his work.
Touche, Kai. Any other comments, discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Thank you very much. Second motion, deputy mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve a public works contract with Redside Construction LLC for the Redondo Fishing Pier Replacement Project in the amount of 3,773,986.34, authorize a project construction contingency amount of 566,000, and further authorize the city manager to sign said contract substantially in the form submitted.
Second. Second with deputy, excuse me, councilmember Mahoney. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes unanimously. Great. Move to motion number three, deputy mayor.
Thank you. Motion three, I move to approve the consultant services contract with Exalt Tech Consulting Incorporated to provide construction administrative, administration and inspection support services for the Redondo Fishing Pier Replacement Project in the amount of 610, 600,000, 610,000.472, and further authorize the city manager to sign said task assignment substantially in the form submitted.
Second. Second with councilmember Mahoney. Any discussion? I hope this is the last comment. I feel so celebratory, and I did on every positive thing that was said, and go Kai. All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like unanimous. Motion passes, you may clap. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the city council protocol manual subject. The purpose of this item is to consider and approve the amendments to the city council protocol manual presentation. City attorney, Tim George.
Thank you, mayor. We don't have a PowerPoint tonight because it's a really short presentation. We compiled all of the edits that the council had approved over the last several meetings. Those are shown in track changes on attachment two, so hopefully those are all correct. One question that wasn't addressed because it is in the Des Moines Municipal Code, and we noted this in the packet, is the start time of council meetings. So if the council were to pass the protocol manual as it's written tonight, the council meetings would continue to start at six and then end at 10. Because we have an updated committee schedule, and the committees are meeting less frequently, there would be an option to start meetings earlier, so we could start the council meeting at five. That would require a municipal code update. So just putting that out there for the council to consider. If you'd like to keep it at six and go to 10, then you can approve the agenda submitted.
Right. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
We don't have to go to 10, right? That's correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Nutting, I can't see you, so I'm not sure if you do have one or not. Okay, you're good? All right. So what this was, was a, basically, is a staff ask to consider moving the council meeting to the 5:00 PM time slot instead of starting at 6:00 PM, since I think part of the thinking was that we're used to having committees during that time anyway, where most of us were usually here anyway. So I think it's an ask to keep the, and I think the opposition at the time this discussion was had, when we did this amendment during, with the protocol manual, was the ability of the public to attend and comment in our meetings. So there are two ways to think about that, is that that same reasoning works for extending to 10. That is also a very difficult timeframe for people to be here. And then there is also the strong possibility, probability that we'll be moving toward the ability of citizens to offer public comment on Zoom remotely anyway. So I think some of those objections to moving a council meeting earlier are being overcome with some of the other considerations. So I just wanted to add that. Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I appreciate that staff would like to start the meetings earlier, and it is an unfortunate fact of life that they get asked to be here, sitting in the back throughout the meetings, and if we started early, we'd obviously end earlier, and I think that is a consideration why we moved it up to six, because we used to start at seven. However, you know, some of us work, and if we want people who are working to be able to be on the council and have jobs, then we have to allow time for people on the council to get here. And I would find it extremely difficult on a regular basis to get here at five. I was able to do that with, you know, one committee meeting per month, and that worked out okay for me, but I also think it would be really difficult for people that have, that are working in changing locations, that don't, they're not always the same place because it's harder then for them to predict their travel time. So with all due respect to the staff's request, I would not support changing it until nine, and I do think that it still make, at six o'clock, it's just that much easier for the public to get off work and to get here and actually be sitting here in the audience, even though some might choose to make their comments on Zoom. So I would not support changing the time.
Okay. Councilmember Nutting, and then councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, mayor. I have to support deputy mayor Steinmetz in this, although my reasoning is quite different with a job that requires me to be onsite on different hours of the day, whether it's three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, or five o'clock in the morning, and to be required to sit here until after 10 o'clock, after it's been extended several times, I can't support moving this at, we're just required, I don't know, I, it's, I'm having a hard time accepting the fact that we're moving this again after it's already been moved. So that's, that's what I have to say, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I have to agree too. We moved from seven to six, and that was a considerable change. Five's a little too early, it's always been difficult to attend the earlier council meetings once a month on the, at large is fine, but oftentimes the ones I started at four and stuff are very difficult. And as far as going out to 10 o'clock, I think there's only so much intention span that the public has. I totally respect the staff, and I know a lot of them, the theory is they come in at noon and they work till nine, but that's not the case there, and it's seven, 6:00 AM. I know you are, and I really appreciate that. But some of us are doing the same thing, and being able to get here, change gears, and move into it is appreciated. I still think, open-ended, I still, even though I think the councils worked through it, and there were a lot of consensus in majority on certain points, I still think going past nine o'clock without some kind of agreement between the council on a supermajority is a mistake. And I also have issue as well with, with the second reading, a couple of examples were the two ordinances today. I think we, we have the fortitude to be able to do a second reading when it's pertinent, but it was the will of the council, so I'm going to support it, but I can't support the earlier start time, and I really apologize to staff because I know how you already work, but on the other side, I think we want to give the opportunity for public to attend. I will say this, I'm very interested in the Zoom response by the public, I'd like to see that first, and see it and have it working, and be non-problematic, and then there might be some considerations that might change my mind.
What I'd like to do now is simply be, is only address the one point of the protocol manual, and then we will take, and depending on what that, what goes with that, then we will take general discussion on the points of the manual itself in passing that. So first I would like to ask if there are any other questions in regard to moving the time from five o'clock to nine o'clock? And then just.
Five to nine. Six to nine.
From five from six, or?
No, the request, so right now in the protocol manual, we go from six o'clock to 10. This, the request was to go from five o'clock to nine. Okay? So it looks like right now there's some resistance, and so I'm offering opportunity for basically questions, and then I want then to make sure everything's clear so everybody kind of has an understanding, and then is there a motion? There might not be one, but want to know if there are any other questions? Okay. Councilmember Harris, and then councilmember Nutting.
So at the risk of betraying ignorance, is this request in writing? And I just didn't see it.
No, this is just part of the presentation here, it's putting it out into the air, and so if you want, I could even say this, and, and now the question is going to be, does somebody want to make a motion? Okay, so we're just putting information out into the air, and then I will ask, does somebody want to make a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
Clarification, mayor, I thought, so we went from seven to 10.
Used to, yes.
To nine.
Correct.
But you misspoke, you said six to 10.
So six to 10 is what is in the protocol manual as presented for this motion tonight. Okay? That was what was decided by council to put into the, to the protocol manual. What staff is asking is for a reconsideration of that, to make it from five to nine. So the protocol manual basically extended the standard city council meeting window from three hours to four hours. So what we're asking now is that that four hours begin, or that they, that there's a crest out there that that four hours begin at five.
Thank, thank you for clarification, and I do remember now that I did not vote for the six to 10.
That's right.
I kept my, dug my heels in at six to nine, so I'm, I continue to dig my heels in from six to nine.
Okay. Great, thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui, and then councilmember Harris.
I appreciate you bringing this forward as a request, and I want to.
I appreciate you bringing this forward as a request, and I wanna respectfully say thank you for speaking up and stating what would be a preference for you all, for the staff. Unfortunately, I think as a, another person who is working full-time, it would be very difficult for me to be here at 5:00 on a regular basis. And in fact, there are some nights that 6:00 is a stretch, and I'm in the car trying to get here at a reasonable amount of time, so that I have other responsibilities at home that I can take care of before I even get here. And so, I cannot support moving it to 5:00, due to my own personal obligations and responsibilities. I also want to say that the 10:00 is not a, we'll stop at 10:00. It's a mechanism put into place so that we don't have to extend the meeting every 15 minutes, 5 minutes, 2 minutes at 9:00. We can end at 9:15, 9:00 on the dot, or whenever the business agenda is done. It's not saying that the duration of our meeting is gonna be from 6:00 to 10:00. It just means that we don't have to make a motion every time we want to extend that conversation, and we don't finish at 9:00. And so, I think that it's a, it's, it's not, I hope that we have the management and the willpower to move forward to say, we're gonna end when the agenda ends, and the agenda will be a reasonable one to try and end at 9:00, with just having to get rid of that, we're extending, we're extending, we're extending. And so, the idea that we're saying that our meeting is gonna end at 10:00 is just not true. It's just allows us not to have to extend it when we hit 9:00. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the city manager for a comment here, and then Councilmember Nutting, and then Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I want to jump in on this. This was a request that was brought to me very strongly by staff, but we are not dying on this sword. Let me be clear. We work for you, and we work for the citizens. We were simply offering it as a, hey, this is something that, that staff have asked to bring forward. We work for you all. I think we sense the tone and tenor. No problem. We can move forward to the rest of the protocol manual. I've also heard the comments loud and clear about agenda management and time. The mayor and I, every week, work very hard to keep things moving and expedient, and we will continue to do so.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to add that it's, it's also on us. It's on us to follow the agenda, and to hold questions for question time, discussion for discussion time, and to move through it quickly as well. And so, you can construct the greatest agenda in the world, but if no one adheres to it, good luck to both of you to get us on board with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting, did you still have a question or comment?
I, I do have a comment, and, and, um... My challenge is, is that my tenure on council is longer than anybody else sitting there, and our council meetings have continuously gotten longer and longer and longer. And the inability to, Councilmember Grace, Grace's point is that we, we continuously not stay on subject. And to allow this to go longer without the vote of the council is, is absolutely unacceptable. There are councils that meet regularly in larger cities, that are able to conduct their business in 45 minutes to an hour consistently. And I, it, the agendas have consistently been, been more packed with more items, and, and it, it just allows for the ability to move past the 10:00 hour, even. It, I'm, I cannot, I cannot support this.
All right, thank you. I think with the withdrawal of the city manager of the request, I'm gonna move on. I'm not gonna open for a motion or any more comments on this. In the spirit of what has just been said, we need to continue moving forward. So, we do have the protocol manual up here. Any questions in regard to the not comments, or why are you gonna vote yes or no? Just any, any further questions? Okay? I do have a couple, let's see. For clarity, can the city manager presentation count as one touch? Just for clarity.
No.
No, it cannot.
Or an ordinance, no.
Yeah, because the, why is that?
Because we call it a reading, so you'd have to present the ordinance, and that would be considered one reading.
Okay, thank you. All right? And do we have the ability, with our rules intact, to suspend the rules in order to move an ordinance forward with one reading?
Yes. Under, I believe it's council protocol manual rule 11, 1105, the council can suspend any of these rules that aren't state law. You can't override state law, but you can override your own rules with the vote of the majority.
Okay. Kind of like 26B. The old 26B.
Yes, but you could also override other rules as well.
All right, thank you. So, those are my questions. I am opening for a motion. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the motion.
Yes, I move to pass draft regu, not, pass draft resolution number 25-074, updating the City of Des Moines Council Protocol Manual.
Second, Councilmember Grace Motsui, discussion. Councilmember Harris and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yes. So, I will be voting no, and there is so much wrong with this that, but I wanted to, Councilmember Nutting's point, I actually agree completely with something he just said. There was a very narrow motion, and as they say in marriage counseling, everything becomes about everything. And we, the things get expansive, because people just care about various stuff. The meetings are getting longer, because the city has all the complexity of Kent and federal way. Suck it up. It is simply going to be, the future of our city is to be small, but a ton of complexity, and rules, and stuff like that. And I'm not thrilled, frankly, one of the things about getting a new city manager, one of the most unpleasant things about the last regime was the blind side.
Councilmember, could you keep the protocol manual?
Yes.
I'm, okay, thank you.
There should be, it is inappropriate to have the city bring forward something like this at the dais. If the staff feels strongly about it, put it in writing, put it on an agenda, please. Okay? And I'm just saying that to ask us to make this kind of a deal-
It's in the packet, sir.
On the fly.
It's in the packet.
I asked, it just, it, it's just not, it's not a great look. All of this should have been from us. And so, anyway, that's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, did you, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Mahoney?
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, we've spent a lot of time going over every inch of this. Not everybody gets what they want, but we all have ended up with something I think at least all of us can live with. Yeah, we're getting more complex. That's why we need a set of rules. You know, yes, we, if we read our packets, we see there it is, right there, and during, in the discussion section, that there is a proposal to move the meeting time, an option to move it up. Shouldn't have surprised anybody. I just, you know, we need a set of protocols that we can operate under. I think this accomplishes that. Not everybody gets exactly what they want here, of course not. That's not the legislative process. That's why they call it sausage making sometimes, but this is, this is pretty good sausage, you know? It'll serve us well for a few years. There'd be some changes that we want to make, some changes we will probably agree that we don't want to make, but that will come out in the process. It's never a done deal, but this is a good sausage. Let's pass this.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. There's some parts I disagree with, but I believe in the will of the council, so part of it, I reluctantly agree to this. I will say this, if we want the meetings to be shorter, I think it's the responsibility of the council. I challenge us all to be pointed, short, and to the facts. No wandering, no meandering. Keep it within the specifications of your two times and so forth. Know your rules. Exercise that the meeting will go a lot faster. Thank you.
Any other comments? My only comment over the hotly debated issue that I, I am uncomfortable with, but I am passing this, I will be passing this, is to be clear, the second touch with an issue going, what could, should be a clean and easy yes on an ordinance like a few of them tonight, that this, that the second touch doesn't turn into an opportunity to influence the public versus hearing from them. And that if there's no responsive significance during the waiting time, that it isn't pulled simply for the opportunity to soapbox. And I fear that at times, that is exactly what will happen. But I'm saying it now, I won't be here generally when that happens, but I'm just sending out a yellow flag. All right. So, any other comments? All in favor of passing the protocol manual as submitted? Okay. Councilmember Oxiker, Councilmember Grace Motsui, Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Nutting. Motion passes 5 to 2. All right. Congratulations for all the hard work. It was hard fought to get where we are on that. Okay, new business coming up next. Then, first item on, under new business is our anti-cruising ordinance, and the purpose of this item is to consider an anti-cruising ordinance. Repetitive right there. Presentation coming forward from Assistant City Attorney Matt Hutchins. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Again, Matthew Hutchins, Assistant City Attorney, with the staff presentation on draft ordinance 25-065. I'll say it one more time, an anti-cruising ordinance. So, I'm, I'm sure everyone here is familiar with the concept of vehicular cruising. Think of summer evening, summer afternoon, summer night, on the weekend, down by the beach, a strip going through downtown, a group of people gathered together with their cars, sort of driving back and forth aimlessly to be seen, to socialize. And for the most part, the participants, I assume, would say, you know, this is just harmless, fun, social activity, but there are negative impacts for the neighborhoods when it happens. I will save you my spiel, because we had testimony from a community member tonight who explained it much better than I could. So, as it turns out, we found at least 18 jurisdictions in Washington State, 16 cities, two counties, that have anti-cruising ordinances to combat the, the bad effects of cruising. All of these ordinances are variations on the, the same form. A stretch of roadway is declared a no-cruising area. Police pick a spot on the road to do enforcement, and then you are deemed to have committed the offense when you pass by, that's, excuse me, pass by that spot in the same direction a certain number of times, within a specific timeframe. As you can see from this chart of all the jurisdictions, commonly, it's three passes within a two-hour period. There are a few different ways you can designate what the no-cruising areas are. And there's a rough split between the jurisdictions on whether they have it just as an infraction with a fine, or they make it a criminal offense. But I will point out that for a lot of the misdemeanor jurisdictions, they, it appears that they've opted to go with just a fine for the penalty and no jail time attached. So, at the bottom, you can see where the proposed draft infraction fits in with these other, these other jurisdictions. But now, I will go into a little more detail. So, in the draft ordinance, the offense has been defined as passing that traffic control point picked by police two or more times in the same direction within a one-hour period, which is bringing it down from the two hours that most other jurisdictions do. We've put it at, as a civil infraction, a class one under our code, which has a $250 base fine. When you add on the mandatory state assessments, that makes the total penalty total up to $513 per offense. Obviously, we don't want people who are making multiple, multiple trips in the area for legitimate reasons to get caught up in enforcement. So, exceptions have been provided for government vehicles, taxis, transit vehicles, urgency vehicles, people who live in the no-cruising area, and people who have medical reasons, or they're there on commercial reasons that require that they come through multiple times. The ordinance, as written from the outset, defines Redondo Beach Drive, Marine View Drive downtown, and the Marina parking lots as no-cruising areas. The council would reserve to itself the ability to add new areas as needed, can either amend the ordinance, or if you need one that takes effect immediately, the council can pass a resolution that would take, take effect immediately upon adoption. And if there's a, an emerging situation that needs to be taken care of immediately, the police chief would have the ability to declare an area when specific conditions exist that are enumerated in the, in the ordinance. This is meant to be just a temporary measure, and once the condition clears and is not likely to come back, the signs would be removed, and the declaration would be rescinded. None of these areas can have enforcement until they are actually posted with no cruising signs, just so drivers know that they are entering an area where if they are passing through multiple times, they are liable to be cited for cruising. Lastly, I just want to emphasize that a cruising ordinance is a, it's a valuable tool for PD when they're able to do dedicated enforcement, but doing cruising enforcement is, is gonna take a lot of work. It requires at least one police officer to stay at that spot for probably an hour, maybe multiple hours at a time, may, may, may in fact require multiple officers, so they have someone to spot, and someone to go chase people down. I'm sure the, the chief could probably explain better what he's imagining for enforcement. But given that there are a lot of law enforcement needs in the city, and we have limited resources, there shouldn't be an expectation that they can, you know, do this all the time. So, they, they will do it when possible, but it, it's gonna be difficult to do a lot. So, we have a suggested motion on the screen. Given the, the vote that was just taken, there, there may be an alternative motion someone wants to make, and that, that ends my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions only before the motion, thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and Councilmember Mahoney, and then Councilmember Harris.
Yep. Mr. Hutchins, I appreciate the criteria for the chief to temporarily declare it, but I don't see a timeframe for that temporary. Is there a timeframe, and can it be linked to one or two council meetings, so that we could pass that resolution if it's an emergent situation?
If that was the will of the council, we, we could probably add, add something like that to the ordinance.
But there's-
There's nothing in there right now. It essentially is up to the, the discretion of the chief to, to know when it's not needed anymore.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
I noticed Pat Kuyt wasn't, wasn't on there. Is that because it's multi-jurisdictional, and a bit difficult to manage? Or is, was there some reason as to why it wasn't?
It was not one of the areas that was brought up to me as, as one we needed to focus on. If, if the council or the chief felt that was an area that needed, needed work, that, you know?
I understand there's a provision to add where necessary, as the chief may dictate, which is good, but I just didn't understand being- which is good, but I just didn't understand being that seems to be, I don't exactly hang out on Pac Highway a lot. But, yeah, I've witnessed particularly like the Dicks up there, right? Where they get the car clubs and stuff, and they go back and forth on Pac Highway. Part of that's Kent, part of it's us. I understand. It's very difficult. But I'm thinking, and I would take the chief's word of whether he thinks we should add it tonight, or in his decision-making that's inherent in this policy, that he add it later if he feels is needed. So, that's all I'm kind of after here.
I will point out that Pac Highway is only in Des Moines between 216th and Kent-Demoin Road. So, it would be, it would have to be on that section. Anything south of there, like in front of Dicks, that's Kent.
That was my mention of the multi-jurisdictional. I could see it being difficult to police, but obviously, if there was alignment with Kent and so forth, I could see it being beneficial. But I guess I leave that to his decision and recommendation if he feels is needed.
Okay. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. And I don't need to go into the mechanics, but I should have asked this before. Is there an exemplar or something? I'm just trying to imagine what a ticket would look like. In other words, you know, does the officer say, "I observed Fred at 6:12," and then another line says, "I observed Fred at 6:43"? I just, I honestly don't know how that would work.
Yeah, that's exactly what it'd look like. There's several defenses to this. So, a traffic stop would be, "I saw the same vehicle go past the same location," meaning the probable cause for stop. And then we would have to ask some follow-up questions and verify address and do some other stuff during our contact. We would then have to document all that and submit it to the court. So, what it would look like is almost what you're saying. You went by at 6:05, you went by again at 6:10, pulled you over, talked to you. You said you were showing off for the people on the boardwalk and trying to make a bunch of noise. Here's a ticket for that behavior, because that's not one of the exemptions. Then we would document that. That's the way I actually envision this being most predominantly used, is as a tool for that one chronic vehicle, and we know the couple of areas where they drive in a circle and make a bunch of noise, and this should be another tool in the toolbox of an officer. That's the way I really view this being most predominantly used, which kind of goes to Councilmember Mahoney's question as well, is is it always going to be the most appropriate for the mechanism on the highway? Highway has very different dynamics than some of the residential neighborhoods that are included in this ordinance. And I think what I heard from the council was, the motivation behind this ordinance was those conflicts between residential and traffic. So, that's what I heard. I think the highway definitely is consistent. There's cruising behaviors, but the dynamics of the highway are very different than the dynamics of the ordinance areas.
Okay. Back to the attorney. Thank you. I'm just, because the language of traffic control point is so specific, that is a point in space that is being looked at by a police officer.
That's correct. And that's found in pretty much all the ordinances I looked at.
Okay. Would the city have any objection to adding a line to the third subsection stating that it will be defined as being monitored by an officer of the city?
I don't actually have the language of the ordinance in front of me, but I thought that is...
It says, "A traffic control point," in quotes, "means a point in a designated no-cruising area selected by the police department for the purpose of monitoring cruising." It doesn't say what constitutes monitoring. So, what I'm suggesting, since it sounds like the practical approach is to have an officer saying, "Traffic control point means a point in a designated no-cruising area monitored by an officer of the city, police department, for the purpose of monitoring cruising." That's redundant, but...
If that is how the, I wish to go, of course, we could do it. I don't think it's strictly necessary. It's sort of implicit that the officer, the signing officer, will have either monitor that spot himself or...
Let me just, and then I'm done. But I'm foreseeing a time fairly soon where there will be attempts to automate this. And that does not thrill me.
Okay. So, you did ask a question, and he answered it.
I'm asking if that is legally possible.
I could see theoretically in the future, photo enforcement be used for this purpose, but we would have to actually enable photo enforcement to be used for this purpose.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I wanted to clarify around the implicit part of what you just mentioned. I mean, is there anyone else in the city staff who could monitor with the intent of giving a citation for a moving violation?
I think if, for example, we wanted to have a community service officer watching the spot and provide the information to an officer who could cite a person.
But someone would have to have a commission, they would have to have legal authority to give the citation.
Yes, a commissioned officer would have...
So, no one else is going to be there? Bonnie's not going to be there, I'm not going to be there handing out citations, because we don't have the authority.
Correct.
Right, okay. So, to me, it's implicit because, although if you want to become a community service officer, we could work on that as well. It seems implicit because there's only a certain group that has the authority to issue a citation.
That's correct.
So, to me, that means that it's implicit enough that it doesn't apply to anyone else.
That sounds fair to me.
So, I'm going to ask, do I have a motion to change the wording?
Well, Mayor, I would just say, yes, Councilmember Harris could make a motion, but our prosecutors are satisfied, and our legal department is satisfied with the language as written.
Okay.
That this will allow us to enforce it. This will allow the officers to write the citations.
All right. So, I was just hoping...
I would like to make that motion, because we don't visit the...
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Motion fails. Now, next, any further questions? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It looks like many of the other cities or jurisdictions that you mentioned, some of them are not nearby, but one of them is in federal way. Do you know how often they issue citations for this?
I do not have the answer for that. I can, if it were to be addressed at a later date, I could try to track that down. I'm not sure how successful I'd be.
Sure. I would just love to know if they felt like it was a useful tool, something that they do use, and they find it to be helpful. It's one thing to have it on the books, like a credit card policy from '95. It's another thing to say, "Is it useful? Can it help me?" Thank you.
All right. Any further questions before the motion? Opening for a motion, Councilmember Oxiger.
I move to forward draft ordinance 25-065 prohibiting cruising to the next available consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Second, Councilmember Grace Matsui. Any discussion? Council, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I have an amendment. Section two, subsection two, this is the chief of police designation area. At the end of that sentence, I would like to add a new sentence. Such designation shall remain in place only as long as the next two city council meetings.
I don't understand.
The point of the amendment is to allow the chief to designate it, but to bring that to the council if it's going to extend past two subsequent council meetings. And that way, it does come before the council rather than having something just remain in place, and that way, there's an interaction between the chief and the council about that area within two council meetings.
So, we need a second, Mayor.
Yeah. Do I have a second? Okay. Motion fails. So, any more discussion? Councilmember Harris.
Yes, I will abstain on this. I fully support the notion in principle, but I have, we already have flock cameras, we have the ability to monitor license plate readers, and I noticed that the airport now is going gung-ho on facial recognition, because people will go with convenience. And the moment that flock or some other vendor provides the ability to automate this kind of thing, you are getting into pre-crime. You are basically going into surveillance, because you're not responding to an event. You're basically monitoring like purchasing behavior, and without any kind of limits as to how long we store data. We don't have a firm data retention policy on any of this stuff. A future council will go all-in on this. You've seen how infrequently we look at basic code things, and people will see that the toe is in the door, and they'll just go for it with reflexive. They won't even think about it. And so, it's a lovely idea. It will probably write a ticket twice a year. And if it does, well done. But this is something people should be a bit more concerned about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I'm absolutely going to support this ordinance. I think there was, you've heard my amendment, but it didn't pass, and that's fine. It's still a good ordinance. I am not concerned about automation, because we have a clear statement from the city attorney that it's not intended to do that. I think we're creating a good legislative record that it is not going to be allowed. We do have a limit on license plate readers, which is 30 days. So, you know, you can't really automate this process, given the state of the law in this state at the moment. And on top of that, it still requires somebody to monitor it. A person. It requires a police officer to be involved. We don't have those issues yet. I think this is well-founded. I think it is a way to allow certain neighborhoods in our city to have a problem addressed, and this is not unique to Redondo. Obviously, there are three other areas where we have had cruising problems, or two other areas where we have had cruising problems, and that's why it's an application throughout. I think this is well-written, very tight. I would have had one change, but hey, you don't always get what you want. I accept that as part of the legislative process. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, support this. I've been down to Redondo, and I'm diving and seeing some of the nonsense. I've seen the same cars on multiple times, as well as I watch it downtown today on a regular basis. My concern is the enforcement of this, and I'll be candid. This is one of the concerns we had heard over and over again from the community, and it's one of the reasons we brought a levy forward. The levy failed, and I'm concerned we don't have the resources. So, there's an expectation people might have that this can be enforced at a certain level, or why aren't you enforcing this? And the truth is, if there's a murder going on, or domestic violence, or robbery, or some of the other things that these guys are facing every day, that's got to take a priority. In addition, we are very thin-staffed. The police are working overtime, and this is something where they have to be in one place a lot. And so, in a way, this, it makes it very difficult to enforce, and I want the public to understand that, that we can pass all these laws, but if we don't have the resources to do it, it's going to be tough to enforce. So, I need that understanding to reach out to the public, because in a way, we have not given them the tools they need to exercise these types of ordinances. Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I appreciate your presentation, and I think that I would have addressed a concern, and would be happy to amend this in the future, about having a traffic emphasis zone indefinitely declared by the chief, but I didn't think two meetings was actually long enough, because that could be a week and a half practically. So, bring it back with another amendment another time, Deputy Mayor. I am in the exact same position as Councilmember Mahoney. I am concerned that we do not have the resources to enforcement. And so, I don't want to give anyone false hope that this will make a tremendous impact, because if it requires an officer to sit in one spot for one hour and hope that they're not needed somewhere else in order to give that citation, and then they have to sit there and pull the person over, talk to them about it, and then now they've sunk two hours into that one traffic stop. And I'm just concerned that if we want to have proactive enforcement, if we want to have crime prevention-type strategies, we need additional resources to do it. And I hear lots of folks say that they want an emphasis on traffic, but we have to be willing to put the resources in place to make it happen. And so, those mean that we may have to look at priorities in other areas and say, what can we cut in order to fund a traffic dedicated officer? Or we need to identify new resources or additional resources to make sure that the staffing is in place to make that happen. And so, I'm just concerned, like has been said, that we'll have this on the books, but I'm not sure that we'll have the capacity to enforce it as much as anybody would want it to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we still have Councilmember Nutting online, or did he have to cut out? He cut out. Okay. Just want to make sure that I was checking with him, if he was still there. All right. Any other points or discussion in regard to this? Let's see. My comments then are ditto on Councilmember Grace Matsui and Councilmember Mahoney. I am very concerned about the notices I'm going to see out on Facebook. We've got an ordinance. How come nobody's pulling him over? So, I just don't want this to turn around and bite somebody in the backside that we've got something, and now it's going to look like a failure. So, I am deeply concerned about that, but I also see the deep desire for this. So, I will be voting in favor of it, and I will also work hard to be on the defense when it comes up. If I'm going to vote for this, then I'm going to work to help bring reason to people who want to criticize. All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and myself, all opposed. No opposition, abstained. Councilmember Harris abstains. Motion passes. All right. Next up, we have the city strategic plan and facilitation. The purpose of this item is to seek approval for the strategic plan and the facilitation services. And we'll have a short presentation by the city manager, Catherine Cafrey.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about this last week during the study session. No, not last week. Week before. Whenever we met last, we talked about this. So, just real quickly, we started talking about this as a group in March. The council was unanimously supportive of pursuing this process. I've gotten your feedback along the way, both at the study session and as we were reviewing consultant teams. I've summarized that there, but I'm going to keep going. You remember, we talked about this in late June. We issued the RFQ, received six responses. We've interviewed them, gone through them. We talked about the firm we were recommending, which is Raftellus. And then tonight, what I'm bringing you is the professional services agreement with them, which is for an amount not to exceed $74,900. So, I want to talk a little bit about what's included in that scope of work and that fee. This is a six-to-seven-month project. It has multiple people from Raftellus working on it, and there's a couple of key steps. The first one is really them getting a comprehensive background on the city, major issues, challenges, things that are working well here. They would be reviewing a lot of relevant background materials. They would have individual confidential interviews with each of you all. They would obviously be talking to myself, some other key senior staff additionally. And I'll talk more about the nexus with the long-range financial plan in a minute, but when we get that completed, they will absolutely be reviewing that as well. But I anticipate there'll be a lot of conversations, at least between staff and them, about city's finances and sort of the overall condition. The next phase is really community engagement. We heard loud and clear from the council how important that was to you all. So, this is not an exhaustive list, but I want to hit on some of the highlights. So, there would be focus groups. I think we've got a price in here for six of them. At least one kind of community-wide town hall slash open house, an online survey, and then we would be... And then we would be doing some real targeted outreach. So like, there's already the downtown trick-or-treat event. It makes sense to have something down there where people can at least find out about the survey. What's Up Des Moines is a perfect event for us to ask to, hey, can I get five minutes to talk about the strategic plan effort? We could actually also be at things like the youth sports that will happen again in the fall and be there and see if some parent wants to take a survey. And, I mean, I know I'm always looking for other things to do when I'm standing there. Neighborhoods. So we would just sort of go everywhere we could to really encourage people to be aware of the process, come to the town hall, most importantly, take the online survey. There's so many ways we'll be keeping the community informed. I'm not going to go through all of those, but I know how important it is to this group that we, you know, don't just hear from the same old same old. So to that end, we would be looking at everything being in multiple languages beyond just Spanish. We've gotten some interesting information from the library system about what books are checked out most in other languages. And so I think that could be a good indicator on some additional languages we may need to get things translated into. And then, we really want to hear from areas of the community we usually don't. So you can see there's some of our ideas for how to do that. Doing some sort of pop-up events at some of the larger apartment complexes, leveraging the relationships our CSOs have, even looking at direct mail postcards to certain areas. It's probably cost prohibitive to do that citywide, but we can look at areas and focus that. And then, I think kind of reaching out to the food bank or other community nonprofits about relationships they have and, you know, hey, can you help us get the word out? We primarily do want to hear from residents, but I think there's a way we can, we can use those groups to help us with that. So, I know that's important to you all, so I wanted to spend a moment talking about some of the ideas there. So really, community engagement lasts almost the whole fall because that's a pretty robust effort. We also will be doing some staff engagement included into this. So senior staff will be involved in the process, kind of more behind the scenes, giving background on things. And, you know, staff is people that sort of do the day-to-day, have our own list of sort of things we see as potentially our strategic goals or priorities to work on. And then Raftellus feels it's important to do an online employee survey, which sort of surprised me at first, but they find a lot of benefit from that, especially when it gets to implementation, right? To have gotten some input from the people that'll be taking the goals and priorities the council ultimately sets and doing them. We've also included funding in here for several strategic planning workshops. So there's one with city staff to sort of do, senior staff really, to do like an initial, hey, here's some material and ideas for then the council to respond to. So, the consultant team with Raftellus has said it's very hard for councils to just get a blank piece of paper and be told, here you go, write the strategic plan. It can sometimes be helpful to sort of have something to respond to. So you would have something city staff draft, and you'd have a ton of information about what you heard from the public during that public engagement process. So it sort of gives the council a jumping off board when they do the strategic planning workshops, which is really where you all define the priorities, talk about strategic initiatives, all of those type things. So we do have the unusual situation of obviously having a council election in November. So what we are recommending is that the existing council is heavily involved via interviews and input during the fall, but that the actual formation of that document happens with the 2026 to 2027 council so that there's buy-in from everybody on this document. So then, the last two steps are, you would actually develop the plan, review that with council. And then I also heard from you all a real desire for implementation, to be real and meaningful. You did not want a plan that just sat on the shelf. So, we've actually included some budget in here to develop what we're calling an accountability matrix. But really, it's a way for you all, myself, and in a way, the public to sort of track what's the progress being made on these initiatives. It's a way to sort of start that path of kind of showing the community our progress on things. And places where we get snagged are places where we hit delays. So I mean, it would be a fully transparent process. I know originally, if you all remember, in March, we looked at Issaquah's plan, which is very, very, very extensive. We are not budgeted to do that, but it's a good starting place to sort of have transparency on our performance. This timing that we've proposed is actually great when you think about it from the budget development perspective. So by the time this work would be done in the spring, it would allow us to really integrate that into the 27, 28 budget, which would be excellent. Like I said, we've got tools to provide the updates to the council. Now, I have gotten some questions on sort of, well, what, how does the long-range financial plan, how does that work with this? So what I would say is the strategic plan is your big umbrella. Like that is your guiding light of like what we are working on and what we are marching towards. The long-range financial plan gives you a really, will give us some very stark information about sort of what the city's financial future looks like, how those two should play together. Is, for example, let's say you get the results of the long-range financial plan and the development impact analysis, and it sort of shows you that, you know, long-term financial sustainability will be very important to have more commercial growth. Okay, so let's say that the math really shows that. That would then be integrated into the strategic plan, for example, by saying something like, we're going to really focus on revitalizing downtown. Or we're going to really take a look at, you know, current zoning conditions to make sure we're, you know, encouraging the right commercial growth or what have you. So that's how those two sort of play together. We do believe that all the financial work will be done this fall, so that will be presented to you all. So that's, that's good information that you guys can take into mind as you work on this. So again, at six to seven months is $74,900. That is a, I know that is a big number, but that is also pretty comparable and actually a little on the lower end for what other communities do when they're starting from scratch because we don't have an existing plan. And really, the cost drivers on this are the public engagement and implementation planning, but I heard those were very important to you all, and I agree. I think it's been a long time since the communities had really robust community engagement like this. And so that's, I think those are dollars well spent. So, you all may recall in the budget for the 2025 year, there was $100,000 set aside for contract services, and I'd intended to use it for kind of who knows what came up, or really economic development efforts. When we did that, I'd been here about five weeks. What I would say now is we are much better served to use a portion of those funds for this, which will then inform your economic development to be smarter. So I would recommend we use this. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Would it be a good idea after the certification of the election in the fall to have whoever the new members of the council are going to be and haven't been certified, to at least bring them in for a catch-up session without the rest of us there just so that they can get up to speed on this process so that they hit the ground running? And would that cost any additional amount, or is that possible to work in here?
That's a great suggestion. I think we can absolutely do that. In order to kind of maximize funds, when the consultants come into town, because she's in Northern California, we'll be doing a lot when they're here, so I think we could absolutely add that in. And I'll also make sure, because you know, I, well, you are a candidate. I have been emailing the candidates just, you know, information as we go. I'll make sure that they're aware of when we're having the town hall, the survey, things like that so they can absolutely participate that way as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxiger after that.
So, a comment and then a sort of a, well, just to add to your list, I was, I hope you will add the schools and the PTAs to your outreach. I think you will get a, yeah, you'll get a lot of. And also, the five SPDs. I think it would be valuable to include those commissioners and so forth and members of the Des Moines Historical Society, they, you know, some Saturday afternoon or something. My question, and by the way, I'm not at all concerned about the 174. We spent 100 on the communications thing. And that's actually my question. Let's say, see, and this is a sincere question because we spent a lot of time on the mission values thing, which I thought was like the guide, you know, that's like the, and that the strategic plan would, you know, try to figure out how to get there. Let's say the strategic planner looks 360 and says, no, you really should focus on this, that, and the other thing. Do you see what I mean? Like which? My concern is that the mission statement may, I'm sorry, I don't have the, it's a scotoma, a blind spot. It's like horses only see what's directly in front of them. They literally have no side vision. And I'm concerned that the mission state, is the mission statement where they're going to drive to? Or are they going to look at the whole thing and maybe come back with something different?
I would say they are aware of the work you all did in November. I have shared that with them. My recommendation to them, as sort of the person who would be managing their day-to-day work, but I would definitely talk with the council during this, is that really they need to let the community engagement and the feedback they get from the council drive where we go. Hopefully, it will match with the work you all did in November. But my recommendation would be, it seems like it has been a long time since there's been this comprehensive of engagement, and we're probably overdue on sort of driving, letting that drive us, if that answers your question. But of course, the council will weigh in. So it's ultimately going to be the council that decides what's in this plan or not.
No, I'm just, I mean, the reason I mentioned the schools and like Waterview Crossing, the SPDs and stuff is basically, those are people we don't, we almost never hear from, and they do a lot of stuff around here. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger.
One of the, one of the aspects of the contract on the ferry service portion of it with the grant from the Department of Commerce was, you know, identifying. So, in the interest of being able to spend someone else's money to, you know, answer some of these questions here, is there any possibility when you talk to the Department of Commerce that, that we could, you know, retain the amount of money it would take to do the deep dive into who we need to talk to and how we need to talk to them? Not just identifying various groups with their language and stuff, but how they're getting their information. Some of the things that are just, you know, it's, you know, people say Facebook, Facebook, Facebook. It turns out now that it appears to be only mothers and kids in school that are actually using that to a large extent. That the younger generation is using, I think, more of Instagram. And as far as different, different.
Did you have a question, Councilmember?
I'm asking whether or not it's possible to, to have that. If there's, is there any way that we could utilize part of that grant, Commerce, Department of Commerce grant, to, you know, answer some of these questions as to how to best do community engagement?
I will be happy to ask, just like how Councilmember Harris asked. I am. I mean, and don't get me wrong. I'd love as much flexibility as possible. I anticipate, we'll be told, things really need to tie back to the ferry. Because that's really what the crux of that document was about. And so even when you look in that grant application about the underserved communities we were supposed to be reaching out to, it's purely for the purpose of them riding the ferry. But I will ask for sure. And I think anywhere where we can use information we already have that helps us, it's a plus.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Did the city, I know the window is still open, but did this, has the city applied for one of those Port Economic Grant thingies? And is there a possibility of using it to help pay for this thing?
We have not applied yet. We are in the process of preparing an application. Those grants are primarily focused on economic development activities. So in the past, the city has used it for like studies that were done for economic development. What we have been talking to Port staff about is using it actually for implementation of economic development initiatives. So, we do plan to submit an application. I am hoping it actually gives us some funding to actually implement some things that come out of here.
Excellent answer. Thank you.
Can we keep the questions to this strategic plan motion that's coming up? Yes, Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Is it okay if I make the motion?
I just want to make sure that everybody's asked their questions. Okay, go ahead, make the motion.
I move to approve the professional services consultant agreement with Raftellus and for the city strategic plan and facilitation services in the amount of $74,900. And to further authorize the city manager to sign said contract substantially in the form as submitted.
Second.
Second with Councilmember Mahoney. Any discussion? All right, no discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Can I, since Councilmember, this is, it said, well, a six-zero, so unanimous, right? We call it unanimous. Okay, since he's already dismissed. Thank you. That was my question, unanimous. All right, motion passes, unanimous. Right, the next item on. Right. Telecommunications franchise agreement with Hyperfiber. The purpose of this, this item is to conduct a first reading of a telecommunications franchise agreement. The presentation will be brought forward by Assistant City Attorney Matt Hutchins.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council again. Matthew Hutchins, Assistant City Attorney with the staff presentation on a proposed telecommunications franchise with Hyperfiber. So what is a telecommunications franchise? It's essentially a contract between the city and a telecommunications provider that sets the framework for the city, allowing the provider to place their facilities on, in, or above the city right-of-way. It is not, this agreement is not licensed for the provider to just start laying cable in our right-of-way. They still have to go through our permitting process, pay their fees. And the city has not given up any ability to collect applicable utility taxes or to recoup our staff costs for administrating the agreement. Hyperfiber is a telecommunications company based out of St. Louis. They actually have a representative here, so he can correct me if I get anything wrong here. In April of 2025, using our standard process, they submitted an application to get a franchise agreement. And they described their business as providing a simple product, unmatched high-speed fiber internet at a simple price. This is a 10-year agreement, provides for a midterm reevaluation just to see if everything is going well and the ability to make changes as appropriate. If everything is going well through the term of the agreement, there is a optional extension. Hyperfiber retains the responsibility that if they need to relocate their facilities, unless state law says otherwise, they will be responsible for those costs. Again, they still need to get all the permits for doing the work and pay the fees that go along with those. They're required to maintain at least $5 million of liability insurance. And they have agreed to our standard procedures with respect to vacation and amendment of the equipment if and when they decide to stop providing service in the city. In terms of franchise fee, we can only collect enough to recoup us for our actual costs in administering a contract. The parties have agreed to a one-time $5,000 fee to cover what it took to get us to this point and enter this agreement. If there are future administrative costs that, for staff time, the provider will be responsible for those. Again, they need to pay their permitting fees. And as applicable, they are subject to the 6% telephone utility tax. And as you've heard me say several times in the past few months, state law does not allow the council to pass a franchise agreement the same day it is introduced to council. So we're recommending this be passed to the next city council meeting. There is a motion on the screen. And that concludes my, my presentation. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Mahoney, Councilmember Harris, and then Councilmember Oxiger.
So, taking into grant, granted that we're given our residents' choices for their service and costs. I looked at the website, so forth. My question, because I'm always concerned about revenue, because we're looking for sustainable revenues, how would this? how would this, by adding this carrier for, for internet provider, how would that increase our revenues? And I'm maybe hoping you can answer this, because I see like an Xfinity person moving to you. So the net-net isn't really that. And actually, on the pricing you have, maybe less than they pay today. And we're, we're, we're paid off the 6% of that and so forth. So how would, how would you see us as a city gaining revenue by adding your internet carrier to the city? And I think you got to come up here.
I can answer that.
Oh, okay, great.
Well, when it comes to revenue, cities are extremely limited in what we can do under federal law. Because the federal government wants this communications equipment to be accessible. So they've limited the taxes and the fees and all that stuff that we can impose. So we're, you know, we're very limited. So I, this really isn't a revenue generating opportunity. We will see, when we have more providers come in and they get permits and they do work, you know, we do charge for that. And we will see an increase, and it might be neutral, right? Because if you're switching from one provider to another. So this isn't really a, a big revenue opportunity. But it, we are providing, the city is providing our residents with more options, which is something that we've heard a lot. And so as these companies come in and provide or offer even cheaper services and better, maybe better services than what we already provide, it's really a benefit for the city, for our residents.
Yeah, and I, I do get that. It, it's just, we, we need every dollar we can get. And no disrespect to any service that would charge less and offer better service, because that's America. That's what we do in capitalism, and I appreciate that. But I see it, it's, and I look at it as like phone service or cable service or some of the other things that have gone to the wayside. And we've considered the utility taxes and some of these things as kind of that third leg in the stool. And so I, it's more about that, it makes complete sense, and I wanted the public to hear that. But, but yeah, it, it is a concern as we try to find revenues when we have issues with others, even though it provides something great for our residents. So I got to think of it in two baskets, one for our residents and one for our city, is, is all I'm after. If you had a couple of words to add, I'd appreciate that.
I mean, this is 100% fiber optic. It's not a combination of, you know, copper, Comcast, coax cable or, you know, things like that. So what a couple of things it does is it improves the economic development for the city. It also allows you guys to kind of classify yourself as a gigabit city that drives business. But also, it, it, it also improves property values. When, when people have, especially, you know, we saw this a lot during the pandemic where, you know, people were working from home, schools were canceled, you know, doing remote schooling. The, the difference between fiber and that, this technology, it's future-proof. So it's in the ground, it's available for scalability as technologies. We've heard about AI, things like that. As those things grow, the, the community has that infrastructure in the ground.
My compliments to both of you for excellent answers, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, so franchise fees versus taxes, yeah. I am sympathetic with my colleague on that. But it is about cost recovery. My question is, going back to the pandemic, we had a desert for a long time here, frankly, okay? And the city attorney is absolutely spot-on. You would just have a couple of blocks where you could get the gigabit thing, and then you'd have 10 blocks with like zip.
Questions?
So my question is, you are now the third firm to come here like this year. And so I'm wondering, what was the trigger? Are you laying, is everybody just laying fiber? Or are you simply licensing the electrons from somebody else?
No, that's, that's the, that's kind of the, the thrust of the businesses now. I mean, even Comcast and new developments where they're building that, they're putting fiber in the ground. But they have so much money invested in that copper plant, it's hard to not, you know, continue to use that. The one thing about fiber, different over the copper, you know, the cable internet, if you will, is, you know, that was the other thing that came up with the pandemic was your upload speeds. You might get 100, 150 meg on your download and probably 2 meg on your upload speeds. So every time you're using, you know, let's say you got ring cameras, security cameras at home, which some of the nice homes around here I'm sure has, every time your home internet is, you're out here on your phone, you're uploading your video to you. Same thing when you're doing Zoom calls, things like that, you're uploading that video. So what fiber is able to do is synchronize that.
Yeah, no, no, I get, I get that. I apologize, I'm a terrible interrupter. I just really wanted to know why now? Why not two years ago? What made Des Moines this architecturally, some, you know, basically where you said, oh, this pencil's out now?
Well, we're also, we're also building in Kent. We've got a franchise agreement in King County. We're working on Tuck Willa. Matter of fact, there was a meeting with Tuck Willa City Council next week. So our focus is not to be in the downtown, big metropolitan areas. It's, it's focusing out where really the, the monopoly companies have overlooked and not put the attention into. So that's, that's kind of where you're seeing that across the country is more on the.
And, and just how much physical.
Let him finish, please.
Will you have here?
I'm sorry, sir.
Just how much physical infrastructure will you have here? Is there a building, is there?
No, the most visible will be something that looks like a traffic signal box on the side of the, in the right of way that serves a specific amount of area. And, you know, depending upon how long, you know, how, how many homes that we would pass, it depends on, do you have multiple, you know, several of them or just one? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
If I may? You, you use the term "in the ground" several times. I'm very excited about "in the ground." Does it mean you're going to be digging your own trenches and putting it in? Or are you looking to piggyback and are we going to?
It'd be a mix of both. Depends on where it makes sense. If there's poles there, we have agreement with Puget Sound to, you know, attach to the poles. So there's, there's some of that, it's actually cheaper and it's faster to do that. But it also comes with a lot of problems, because you got to submit permits to, to them. You also have to have city permits for the right of way, because it is in the right of way. So you're doubling the permits. But it also, you know, a lot, I think Kent has put a, kind of a ruling in place that everything has got to be underground. And, you know, typically with storms and things like that, that's what you want. I mean, that, that's one of the good things about fiber compared to it. It's, it's not, it doesn't require a lot of power. So power outages and things like that, it's not as affecting as it is with, with, you know, a cable or your typical telephone.
We do a lot of coordinating of digging.
Yeah.
But when, a road's going to get torn up, let's do everything all at once.
Everything's going to be directional boring. So we use directional bores that go in. So we, we, our biggest challenge is identifying the existing utilities. And so we do that through the permitting process. And then, in fact, we've already had teams out here going through and, and doing what we call a high-level design, is looking at where those locations will be at. Are we going to be on the poles or are we going to be underground? But then, once you get into that, before you, you know, start drilling, you do what we call potholing. And you identify where those, those utilities are at to minimize your, you know, your disruption to those.
Anything in the ground is good.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Any other questions before the motion? All right, I have a motion. Councilmember Mahoney.
I move to pass draft orders 25-038 regarding a telecommunications franchise agreement with Hyperfiber to a second reading on July 24, 2025.
Second, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
I don't know if this is something for a GIS or whatever, but there are gaps in their service areas and for significant portions of town. I mean, don't get me wrong, it's all great. If it were possible to have an overlay, just to find out that every utility, you know, that essentially were, you know, are there going to be any current, are there going to be any gaps after this year? It would be a shame that we added so many services but still had several thousand people that, you know, did not have this. So I'd, I'd just like to know where, where, if any, gaps there are going to be.
I don't know that there's what gaps there would be, so typically with the permitting process, we need some of the engineering plans of what we're doing. Don't know how your planning department or public works to realize that information. But we digitize all of that. GIS might need to make sure that we've identified where our stuff is, because it's important to us that if another company or you get a water break or something somewhere that you're digging, that, you know, that doesn't disrupt that service.
Okay, no, it's just that, like, a couple of, a couple of the other providers, and they really made a bold statement. They said they guaranteed 100% coverage within a certain period of time. And I'm like, okay, then, so I'm just, are you?
Talking about coverage throughout the community.
Indeed, yes, yes, sir. The city, the entire geographic perimeter.
Yeah, our intention is to be able to focus more on the residential sides. We'll focus more on the residential streets, but where we pass small businesses, we will, I mean, we're, there's companies that are middle-mile fiber, so they're, they're bigger, looking at Walmarts or Walgreens that already have those contracts.
Yeah, don't take me wrong, I'm seriously grateful, I'm not trying to, I'm just really trying to make sure that we somehow identify where our gaps are, if there are going to be any.
And I think it's important that if you guys identify to us underserved or unserved areas that are important to the community and to you guys, that we focus.
Bless you, thank you.
All right, any others? Councilmember Oxiger.
Just as a point of clarification on how this is coming back to us, the deputy city attorney mentioned that there's state requirements that this has to come back for a second reading. Given that the protocol manual we've just approved, is this going to come back on the consent agenda? Or will it come back as a separate item?
The plan would be the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion before I take a vote? All right, motion's out, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you, passes six zero. All right. That we do have a fourth item under new business, a time for proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda. Any recommendation will simply need a nod from three councilmembers. Do any councilmembers have new business they'd like to propose? Okay, thank you. Next up is our councilmember reports, and we'll begin with Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I had a couple of things I wanted to say. One, there are some great things coming up in July. I know many of us will be attending our upcoming Waterland Parade. We have some great concerts that are happening out in the community. And I hope to see you out there, supporting our community and also some of those local businesses that have given their time and sponsorship to those things. We, we talked a lot about hard choices today. And some of that has to do with the messaging that we heard from the public after the vote for Proposition 1. And I really heard that as we needed to balance the budget or live within the means that we did have. That was what, the message that I took away from that vote. And then our challenge is to try and align the spending with the public priorities. Because it's one thing to balance the budget, and it's another thing to expend it in a way that the majority or maybe some of the community agrees with. But there are also just trade-offs that need to happen if you want us to have a balanced budget. And if you want us to live within those budgets, then there are things that need to drop away. And if you want us to prioritize other things higher. And unfortunately, there are just not enough pennies in the pot for us to do it all. And so what I'm looking for, and I'm hoping, is that folks will engage with the strategic planning process. They will come to meetings, they will reach out to us to let us know if our spending priorities are aligned with their priorities as well. And how we can partner together to make sure that we are not operating outside of what the bulk of residents and voters here would really like us to do. And I would say that the, the main way, if, if that doesn't work, if you come to the meeting, if you come to the engagements and you speak with staff and you talk to your representatives and the priorities are still out of whack for what you believe is possible or true or needed in this community, then I encourage you to think about running for office or getting new representatives that align with your priorities. Because that is the change that happens to make that alignment happen. Is that either you're listened to or you're saying, I will get someone who will listen to me. And so that's really the, the, where the buck stops. It's with you, the public, if you say, hey, the, you've done a great job balancing that budget, but the priorities don't line up. And we still say, sorry, we can't do that because my priorities lie somewhere else. Then your choice has to be clear about whether or not your representatives should listen to you. I wanted to say and acknowledge the great folks who participated by sending us about, I don't know, 20-something emails regarding provisional permit around short-term rental facilities. I've given this a lot of thought, and I hope that we can return to having a conversation at this dais about short-term facility rentals. In the time that we've had since the last discussion, I've found a couple more right here in Des Moines. A place, a, a software service that's called Peer Space, where you can rent someone's living room for a photo shoot. You can say, hey, that looks better than my living room. And so I'm going to go have my professional studio be in your place. And maybe I can pretend that I have a view, like Chuck Coleman. I also found a great service that I might be using that's called Sniff Spot, where you can rent somebody's backyard that has a fence in case you have a dog that doesn't have a fence. And so there are more types of short-term rentals that we could be addressing. Thank you.
Well, your wish is my command. That is slated for the September 4th Committee of the Whole.
Excellent. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So just the, let's see here. Tonight, there's a lot of ongoing tension about now versus the future. That's just the existential tension in all cities. States, federal government, you know, you're thinking about five years and 10 years and so forth. I am horrified at the passage of the federal tax bill thing. Because if you look at it carefully, it puts all the fun stuff in this year and all the pain out into the future people. Which, you know, is kind of what cities do at the micro level. Because residents want their services today. That's always the emphasis. And I always applaud the city when they do things that consider the people from five, who will be here after us, which is kind of weird, because basically a city is one big rental, if you really think about it. But, so on a practical note, SR 509 on 24th Avenue did open. And you can save yourself a couple of bucks if you don't have a good-to-go account by signing up online. But don't get a pass. It's kind of a funky thing where they'll charge you a couple of bucks to get the sticker. But then if you call the 800 number, they'll give it to you for free during this freebie period. And the Veterans Memorial thing is going to open up next Saturday, I believe, or this Saturday. So the point is, is that you can save yourself a couple of bucks and become aware of that thing, because we spent 50 years and $3 trillion, no, it wasn't $3 trillion. But we spent a ton of money on it and just, you know, start taking advantage of it before they start tolling you for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to acknowledge that this last weekend, we had the Shark in the Park event down at Wooton Park. All Os in Wooton. down at Wooton Park, All O's in Wooton Park. It was, it was very well attended, a lot of good comments. And a little bit crowded because we forgot that it was the opening of crabbing season, so the parking lot filled up immediately down there. But anyway, in spite of that, there was a, there was a ton of participation that Mr. Coleman pointed out. And I also, you know, it was a, it was a great example of cooperation between the Mass Center, the city, and the Redondo community. It's, it's leveraging, you know, you know, the, the community, you know, with the city services and stuff, and it, it just, it makes us all shine when we were able to do that. Coming up next Friday, the 18th, is the Waterland Children's Festival being put on jointly by the Des Moines Legacy Foundation and the city. It'll be at Fieldhouse Park. There's going to be bus service to bring kids from up at the Midway Park area down. So this should be an incredibly, you know, well-attended event, and it's all free. So, you know, there's, you can't beat that. But that will run from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And then, of course, the Waterland Parade is on Saturday, and we have a new route this year that basically goes from, for the lack of a better, for, you know, just having a landmark to go off of, it goes from the Anthony's and will conclude here at City Hall, actually. So that's a little bit different route, and so people should be aware of that. The children's parade starts off at 15 minutes earlier at 5:45. So if you have, anybody that has kids that are participating in that, might want to be there a little bit early. And the other thing I wanted to make note of is we just got an email about an hour before council started that Light Rail is going to open possibly by the end of the year. It was supposed to be spring of next year, and they're now saying it could be in maybe December, November, December, which is the $2.5 billion project. It's going to be good to have it come online. It's also presenting some opportunities for us with regard to transportation-oriented development. And so looking forward to, to that. And, phew, a lot going on. So I'll conclude with that.
All right. Thank you.
City staff will be volunteering at the Children's Festival, FYI. We offered that up as a trade for your Friday afternoon sitting in the office, and I think AJ and I anticipate many employees to be out there instead. So.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things was really nice that happened a few weeks ago was the ribbon cutting of the slide. And I was there with staff and Councilman Oxiger, and we made it mandatory if the kids got in the photo and got to help cut the ribbon, they all had to go down the slide. But it was great to see all of you out there, and I'm sure you were glad to get out of your offices on such a nice day. The slide was a little hot. That's what the kids told me. Yeah, it was, like I said, it was do as I say, not as I'm going to do. Because there, I, there was, I don't know if I would have fit in the slide, but it was excellent. Today on my way here, saw lots of kids sliding down. It was great to see. I have the deepest regret for not being able to make it into the Shark in the Park. As many people will know, myself, the Mass Teams, the diving community, and so many, and the city, and so many others worked together to get this going because we do believe it's a great event. The coverage was awesome. I want to just say that let's, it's great. I love the fact that the festival on the 6th is in, at Wooton Park in Redondo, should stay there. But the vision's always been, we need to make it a citywide thing. The education boards down at the marina in the future, and I still believe, and I've talked to the residents on 6th Avenue down by the condos, and I have not met one, in fact, they've come to me, they wanted their street name Six Gil Ave, Six Gil Shark Ave. And they, they still do. So I encourage the council in the future to accomplish that. The other thing I'm going to say is that in life, how many of you guys paid $600, $700, $800,000 for a house? Right off the bat, your first house? Came up with the money? How feasible is that, right? You know? The truth is, you have to buy a house and you make payments over time and invest in it, and you get your children in there, and you raise a family, and you pay the house over time, you build equity, everything else. This has been a thing. Cities need to do that, too. They can't wait around and raise $30 million to do capital projects and let the city go to hell in the meantime, not invest in your future, so forth. It's a misnomer to think that we can collect money to purchase a house outright in the beginning. It's a process where you have to make an investment in your community. You do take out a loan. Fortunately, municipal loans are some of the best you can get. And what that does is bring potential and future sooner to you. And it does open it up. Some of the things we're doing with the money, the fishing pier, or the Veterans Memorial, or the steps, those are the things that in the future, people that will never know any of us or what we did to get it there, accomplish something that they're going to enjoy. I can tell you, when I was down in the marina the other day, on a hot day, that, that splash pad would have been the hit of the century. So I say, we're doing it right. And the rest is nonsense. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, just, boy, there has been just a ton of stuff going on just to sort of, I have to read my own handwriting, so I got to put on the glasses for that. You know, even from, since last time, we had a, Mayor Buxton and I had a meeting with a new Auburn city council member who wanted our, our advice on how to approach being on the council. We had a really great sort of meeting on that. You've already heard a lot of Shark in the Park. I agree. It was a great example of the community, the city, and Mass Center all coming together to make something that was really quite special. Put it on the calendars for next year. It's a lot of fun. You also heard mention earlier of the Ferry Lunch, which was a meeting with council member, county council member Teresa Mascotta, county council member Deshaun Quinn, and just really getting a feel for what is the appetite at the county level for having a ferry line that either connects us to downtown and possibly Vashon Island and making that a circle, a circle route. And there is definitely an appetite for that. And I couldn't be happier from the support that was promised. I also attended the PIC meeting, the Sound Cities Association PIC meeting, as I've already reported on. And then, you know, in the future, we've got a lot of fun things happening. This Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at the theater, the Second Love Coffee Roasters is having their official ribbon-cutting ceremony, and it's great. If you haven't tried Second Love, you should. I have council member Grace Matsui, sorry, I was pausing that, to thank for introducing me to a coffee tonic, which sounds kind of odd, but it is wonderful on a hot day. It really is quite good. And of course, guess where we got it from? Second Love down at the farmer's market. They'll be at the farmer's market, but they're now opening their storefront. They've had some soft openings in the last two weekends. I would urge everybody to come by. The people that run it are wonderful. Their coffee is terrific. They have some good pastries there, although you may want to cut them in two and share them with somebody because, wow, they're big. And it's just really great. The Children's Festival has been mentioned, it's coming right, it's coming up. The parade has just been a whirlwind of activity here, building right up to the 19th. I've been involved in, so we call it wrangling the elected, the various elected officials throughout. Should be fairly well-attended, but they're going to be coming out, and we're going to have a really good turnout. There are a lot of groups out there, some acts, or acts, I guess, people you haven't seen in a while. The Kosaks are a motorcycle stunt group that have been there in the past and are coming back this year. Blue Thunder, which is the Seahawks drum, drum corps, they've got the Husky Alumni Marching Band, and of course, Seafarers Clowns and Pirates. So come out, have a great time. That's on the 19th, 5:45. The kids start marching, 6 o'clock. Everybody else comes in behind them. So I hope that everybody turns out for that. It's a lot of fun. This is going to be a great summer in Des Moines. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I've, I've enjoyed a few, at least a few dozen engagements with citizens, colleagues, staff. I thoroughly enjoy and have enjoyed working with and visiting with everybody. I, I love what I get to do. It's such a pleasure and a privilege to serve this community. I'm going to actually, for my report, refer you to the Mayor's Minute. I put that out twice a month, and anything that I say out here, it's there with full-color pictures. So I would say, go to the Mayor's Minute, it's on the city website or Facebook, and subscribe. Subscribe to get information from the city, any topic that you like, right into your email. I'm loving that we're doing this. How many subscribers do we have?
6,000.
6,000 subscribers. That's how many people now are getting regular information from the city according to what they want to hear about. It's fantastic. I'm so thrilled that we're doing this. So I'll refer you to that for what I've been doing, and I want to leave you this. I feel like this, this set of decisions tonight is fantastic. We have exciting days ahead. This city is, we are offering incredible opportunities to offer economic stability and community vibrancy, not only for the citizens of today, but as already mentioned, for generations to come. Our strategic plan is the foundation of this. And tonight's approval, honestly, I feel like it's one of the most trans, it's more transformative than almost any decision we've made since I've been elected. It has the potential to change the, what we do and even how our council makes decisions and how we move forward and what we provide to our citizens. I am so excited, and I'm sad that I'm not going to be around for the final decision on that, but I'll be watching. And I'll be living here for at least a couple more decades in my life, so I'll be here to enjoy what happens on this dais. And I think we, tonight, in that decision, are set a huge cornerstone for the future of the city. Thank you. All right. Our next meeting date will be July 24, 2025. It will be a city council regular meeting. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. And Councilmember Grace Matsui, do you have a motion?
I move we adjourn.
Second, Councilmember Mahoney. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous.